Is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And if you really need to have a conversation, please take it outside of the room. In conformance, and please close the back door so that we can hear better. Thank you. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. I see many new faces here today. So when you're here to speak either in support or in opposition to the project, we are here to receive new information. So when it's your time at the mic, please give us new information. Do not repeat what somebody else has already said. We want to make an informed decision, and that's going to be extremely helpful to us. So put your name and address and give us new information. If whatever you are concerned about has already been mentioned, put your name and address on the record and have a seat. Sometimes because there are a large number of people to speak on a project, I will limit testimony to four people in support and four people in opposition. That's in addition to the elected officials and representatives of elected officials. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. This is the first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of February 26, 2019. Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first order for extension, calling case BOA 551-171-291, Roxbury Street. Name and address for the record, please. Come up here, sir.
You can sit at the table.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Sir, I name Scott Webster. I live at 291 Roxbury.
So tell us what you're requesting.
Respectfully, I'm requesting an extension for a decision that was made a couple of years ago to change a retail space to an office space in my building.
So tell us when you were before the board on this case?
I think it was March of 2016, and the decision was made in April of 2016.
So usually our, and have you come in for any extensions subsequently?
No.
No?
It was the first time.
So I'm sorry, these approvals are valid for two years?
I wasn't aware that, it was nothing in the paperwork, and the building department didn't say that there was an extension that it expired. So I was unaware.
Okay.
When I went to the building department to go ahead and finish the work, they said I couldn't do it. I had to come back.
Yeah, so that's the two years. So you will need to reapply, okay? Because the environment has changed since then, okay?
Are there any circumstances in which it could be considered?
No. We, you know, it's just the law, okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion will not.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two case for G card, calling case BOA 810-868-9-JONNY-COURT. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to five residential units, a proposed two-story vertical addition with roof deck. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everyone. Lane Goldberg, I represent the owner. Address is 140 Wood Road in Rain Tree, Massachusetts. This is a G card application. There is a letter from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission.
Hey, is Christian here?
We have a letter, though.
We have a letter, okay. So you have a letter for approval from Water and Sewer?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the second case, G card, calling BOA 918-8476-161, Westbrook Line Street. This is an install, new case to crawl space in basement, excavate approximately three feet to create a mechanical room and storage. Sprinkler tanks will be installed. New slab, install a new sliding door at the rear and the top of the guardrail. The violation is Article 32, Section 32-4. This is in the G card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, representing the developer. I have filed a copy of the water sewer approval letter.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Make a motion for approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Just also want to make anybody aware that we are in July for any deferrals. So if you're deferring. Address, please.
6971 Maverick Square.
Is there a companion case as well?
There is.
Okay. Is that 251-253 Meridian?
It is.
Okay. Calling for the record, calling BOA 859-149-251-253, Meridian Street. There's a companion case, BOA 922-475-69-71 Maverick Square. Name and address for the record, please.
James Smith, 50 Congress Street, Boston.
Okay, and what are you requesting?
I have deferral for 6971 Maverick Square. I represent the interests of Maverick Square, I do not represent Meridian.
You're, okay, so you're requesting a deferral for Maverick Square. May I have a motion?
Motion for.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the date, please?
We have a date of July 9th.
July 9th at 11:30, sir.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
251-253 Meridian Street.
Okay, I'll correct myself on the last one. Thought there were companions. Calling BOA 859-149-251-253, Meridian Street. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way. Madam Chair, for the record, I would like to submit a document with this request for deferral that deals with the amendment to the zoning code that this application conforms to the dimensional setbacks, if I may have it upon the record.
So you're requesting a deferral?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
July 9th, 11:30.
July 9th at 11:30. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Deferrals and withdrawals only.
Are you, are you the applicant?
No, I, I'm presenting signatures from a number of residents in East Boston.
So we'll have to wait until July 9th, okay?
Until July 9th.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I would present them then.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
I'll say it one more time. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Hearing none, we'll call the first case. Calling BOA 911-272-9-Chelsea Street. This is direct, a three-story structure, first level to include general retail, 36A restaurant, bank and a sit-down restaurant. Second level to include general retail, fitness and office. Third level to include a general retail, fitness, office and restaurant. The violation is Article 27G. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 52, Section 25, off-street parking and loading requirements, insufficient parking for all accessory uses. Article 53, Section 12, excessive height, 35 feet. Article 53, Section 12, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 12, insufficient side yard setback or budding a residential sub-district. Article 53, Section 11, restaurant on the third floor is conditional. Article 53, Section 11, the general retail on the second and third floor is conditional. Article 53, Section 11, the fitness gym on the second floor and third floor is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Linear Retail. To my right is John Ruffo, the project architect. To his right is Joel Kane, is one of the owners of Linear Retail. Madam Chair, members of the board, we're excited to be before the board today for what is a very significant project for East Boston, for Maverick Square specifically. This is probably representing one of the most significant private investments in Maverick Square, probably over 40 years. Linear is the owner of four parcels of land on the edge of Maverick Square. Those four parcels tend to be combined into one single 18,000 square foot lot where we'll propose about a 39,000-plus per foot retail property. This project has gone through an extensive community process. There is dialogue going back probably more than two years. I can honestly say that in my experience of doing this over 20 years, the first time, that we were actually encouraged to do a larger project as to what was originally proposed. When this building was originally proposed, the community, it was a two-story retail building based upon the rapid development of the neighborhood in East Boston, as well as what's happening around Maverick Square, we were encouraged to take a look at doing a larger building and take advantage of that opportunity for the square. What's before the board today is the most updated plan based upon our presentation of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, which approved this under Article 80 at its meeting last month.
So since submitted, has anything changed to the Article 80 process?
What is before the board is, our original submitted article was a two-story, 20-some odd thousand square foot building. We updated that, refiled plans with BPDA, as well as the Inspection Service Department, and what's before the board is a 39,000 square foot project.
Mr. Bazani has those plans.
Mr. Bazani does have those plans.
Excellent, so please proceed.
So the proposal would be entirely commercial retail building, as the secretary indicated, with multiple uses, including restaurants, cafe, fitness, potentially office on the third level. There are no specific tenants identified at this point in time, but once approvals are advanced sufficiently, we will start beginning the process of what specific tenants are going in. But we have a pretty good idea based upon what we've requested for, to the extent there's any relief necessary for those uses. Located in the neighborhood shopping district, obviously there's a number of uses that would be allotted to Article 53, including those general retail type uses on the lower level. To the extent that we require an unconditional use for other uses above the first level, we requested this part of our petition. As you can see from the design, it's been a significant, based on significant input from both the community as well as the BPDA, the goal here is to try to accomplish a building that captured a lot of the character in East Boston neighborhood, specifically Maverick Square, predominantly masonry brick building with a design that we feel is complementary to the square, as well as the changing fabric of that portion of East Boston. Based upon the fact this will serve as a gateway essentially from both Meridian and Chelsea Street into Maverick Square, we feel that this is a very significant improvement for the area.
So tell us about the violations.
Sure. So with respect to neighborhood shopping, Article 53 requires a maximum height of 35 feet. Our proposed building would range anywhere from 48 to 52 feet, including all the architectural details. By way of comparison, that height of that building is consistent with other buildings in the square, including the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, which was approved by this board back in 2012, as well as other proposed projects in and around the area. With respect to the floor-to-air ratio, again, the neighborhood shopping district allows a 1.0 ratio. We would be slightly above that with 39,000 square feet, almost a 2.0 FAR, but again, very consistent with what's existing in and around the square. With respect to off-street parking, the proposal only has six parking spaces total, but by way of just history for the site, this was the former site of the Rapinoe Funeral Home, which had very limited parking as it was, as well as several commercial buildings located on Maverick Street that didn't have any parking at all. Based upon its proximity to Maverick Station, this provides a very good opportunity for walkable retail. Based upon a number of units that are being approved, permitted and constructed presently within walking distance of the site, this presents much-needed retail for this area.
So what, what is, what are the parking opportunities in proximity? Because it looks like this is maybe taking away some existing parking. So, so, you know, is that, is this use, because the funeral home is different?
Yes.
You know, with, with a more intense retail use, restaurant use, the demand will be higher.
Sure. So the existing parking, or the pre-existing parking for the funeral home was probably around seven to eight spaces located in the front lot, and maybe four spaces located in the rear. Those spaces weren't necessarily used, they weren't necessarily used for any other purpose. For other parking in and around the area, there are, there are lots in the area, but those are predominantly used by East Boston Neighborhood Health Center.
Okay. So what about the rest of the violations?
So with respect to the uses, you have several conditional uses for second story and above for neighborhood shopping, fitness, as well as restaurant on the third level. Part of the design of this building includes an area on the upper level, which would be connected to a proposed restaurant that would also occupy the first level. That would allow for some type of rooftop dining, or some type of connected experience in the restaurant on the lower level. Based upon its location in the square and its view out to the square, the BPDA urban design team thought that was a good feature to include. Part of the changes that also were made with respect to that restaurant use, including making that, instead of just a seasonal use, a year-round use as well. So it does have an enclosure, but a little bit different design.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board?
Counsel, is that the first floor and the third floor are the same restaurant? Is that what you're saying?
It, it could be used as part of the same restaurant, that's correct.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support with this project. They complete the BPDA community process with a public meeting, and also an abates meeting on February 7. Some concerns about traffic and parking were expressed in the community meeting, however, also like good feedback about the design and appreciation about this establishment in the Maverick Square in East Boston. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support of this proposal. She would also like to go on record as supporting the continued Landmarks Commission process regarding the clock, and would like to encourage the applicant to continue working with the neighbors to find a mutually acceptable solution to the clock issue.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Fellers, representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live and work throughout the city of Boston, we want to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Gary Walker, Electrical Workers Local 103, would like to speak as far in support also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Are you here in opposition?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record.
My name is Melissa Tyler. I am the director of butter at 154 Maverick Street, East Boston.
Okay, tell us what your opposition is based on.
There's a multiple opposition. One is the massing. It is going to overcrowd the area, and there's not enough parking for that type of a business that's going in with multiple retail restaurants. We do not have a public parking lot in the neighborhood. The health center promised us that the health center parking would be for patrons, and it's not. It's for their staff only, and is closed in the evenings. We have not been consulted by the group in regards to the height setbacks, and I have an outside dining area, which is the only green outside dining area in East Boston. This massing will reduce the airflow as well as sunlight on that area, which will destroy the ambiance. It also, we don't know where their exhaust fans are going to be. I have two residences and 16 tenants in there, which will also lose their air quality and lighting from the natural sunlight. This is all upsetting to my tenants, because how are we going to have a nice living area when we have requested multiple times to work with the developer to make sure that this is a user-friendly area for the pedestrians, for handicap accessibility, and to maintain our outside dining, and to also work with them on their lighting? And there has been no response from the group in regards to all of this. As well as, the community sought to preserve a three-story, two bow fronts, and that is why we asked for a higher building, is so that the developer could work within that three-story proximity. But they instead decided to tear these historic buildings down, and now there is a massive pit that's been there for about eight months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Where do I begin?
So, these are the issues I heard. I heard massing, I heard parking, I heard height and setback, but more significantly, the three-story and the two bow fronts being preserved.
Let me, let me, I'll take them out of order. The bow fronts that were the subject of very protracted discussions, as well as a hearing before this board on interpretation matter from the Boston Landmarks Commission, have been demolished. They no longer exist. And that was the plan from day one with respect to this project. We understand that that has resulted in certain disappointment within the neighborhood, and we fully understand that. Part of the change of this project and the enhancements to the materials and the design were a direct response to that concern, and working closely with the BPDA urban design team on coming up with something that uses the highest quality materials and some of the best design. So, so we believe we disposed of that issue, and that's, that's no longer before the board. With respect to the height and the massing, I think it's important for context that the building that the previous speaker has mentioned is the former welfare building located at the corner of Maverick and Breven Street. You can't see it in some of the photos. That project was before this board as well at some point in time, requesting none other than a height variance to add in addition to the building. That building presently stands at a height that is in excess of what Article 53 permitted at the time, the variance was granted, with, I might add, strong community support for the renovation and rehabilitation of that building. With respect to the concern over parking, I think the previous speaker's words should be, should be listened to. She indicated that she has 16 tenants in her building. She has no parking for her, for her building either. So, to the extent that that, that site...
Yeah, you know, yeah, I mean, I get it. Yeah.
Well, it's important for purposes of the opposition, so if you're going to...
But I also think, you know, you, you represent a number of people in the neighborhood, a number of developers, and this is not solely to you, it's for every applicant who comes in the door, is that there's always a request for parking relief, and then there's a snowball effect on the community, you know? And so, so, you know...
I could respond to that. I think that part of, part of the conversation, Madam Chair, that we've had through this committee process is a recognition of the, you know, hundreds of housing units that are being built and occupied and around Maverick Square without a significant opportunity for retail. And I think that not having those retail opportunities and having that infrastructure in the community is an issue. So, we do understand the concern over parking. I think carefully planning this and talking with BPDA about the design of this, this building, and ensuring that parking was not the main focus, we understand the concern, but to load up this site with parking or try to add parking to the site will only create additional congestion in the square, which is a separate and secondary issue.
So, okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to, I took that, so we have a response. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 856-175-101, Condor Street. This is to raise the existing building, erect a four-story, 18-unit residential dwelling and parking for garage, for 18 vehicles. There will be a common roof deck for all the building residents. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street loading is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 57, traffic visibility across the corner is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Greg McCarthy to my right, along with Arthur Chu, the project architect, for the proposal of 101 Condor Street. Madam Chair, this site is located at the foot of Eagle Hill, located at the corner of Condor and Brook Street. Condor Street has multiple zoning designations, including waterfront manufacturing, as well as residential on the side of the street that we're proposing, this specific project. Presently, the site is occupied by shipping containers and parking that's ancillary to a tow, tow lot located across the street. Our proposal would be to eliminate those uses and to construct an 18-unit, four-story dwelling on, on the site. This process has had an extensive community outreach, both with the butters, director butters, as well as the Eagle Hill Civic Association. We have supplied the board with a letter of support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association based upon the presentations that we've made for this proposal. As the secretary indicated, this is a total of 18 units. Based upon that, it's subject to Article 8 and Small Project Review. We have presented this to the Boston Planning and Development Agency, which approved this at their board meeting last month. The unit sizes range from as small as one bedroom up to three bed, two bedrooms, I'm sorry, with a average square footage of about 850 square feet each. The one, the one unit bedroom is about 600, one bedroom unit is about 640 square feet. As part of these 18 units, two of those will be reserved under the city's inclusionary development policy, and will be set aside for horrible prices based upon the BPDA DND's recommended guidelines. This is intended as a homeownership project, so these would be sold as individual condominium units upon completion. And as the secretary indicated, we do have a total of 18 parking spaces, one parking space for each of the units that are being proposed. For purpose, for relief, under Article 53, this is located in a 2F-2000 district, therefore multifamily use will be forbidden. However, there are a number of multifamily projects and uses along this section of Condor Street specifically. With respect to the rear yard setback, this being a corner lot, the required setback based on the shallow lot exception would be 25 feet. We have a 10-foot setback, but we're also stepping the building back further as we get, get closer to the building located on Brook Street. The total floor-to-air ratio proposed is 2.72. The maximum is .8, and again, based upon the existing uses that are, that are present today, as well as the context and density of surrounding area, this would not be inconsistent with similar buildings. Our proposed height is four stories at Condor Street, but because the, created this site slopes upwards up Brook Street, it actually drops down about three stories in the rear. But our total height's all 39 feet, not including the headhouse and the roof deck, but we require variance for that, because 2.5 stories, 35 foot is the maximum. With respect to parking, again, we're, we've indicated one space per unit. The required number of spaces would be 34 spaces. However, the Eagle Hill Civic Association felt that one parking space per unit was appropriate for a project of this size, so we do require a merit for parking as well.
Okay, and the roof deck is a common roof deck?
Common roof deck, that is accessed by an elevator as well.
And tell us the breakdown on the units, the number of bedrooms and the size?
All two except for one. Correct, yeah. Seventeen two-beds, one one-bed. Average size of the two beds is 850 square feet, and the one-bed is 640 square feet.
Okay. And, and this is an elevator building?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
So seventeen units altogether?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Any of our own?
Two.
Two. And I'm looking at the elevations of the roof deck. I assume the, there is the headhouse by stairs to get to the roof deck, and then also the elevator?
Yes, that's correct.
Those are two different structures?
Correct.
And in the, in the renderings here, in the last two, the second to last sort of quasi- photographic rendering, doesn't look like there's anything on the roof. It's one of those ghosts.
So it can go down like this?
From that perspective, you should be able to see it.
Yeah. I mean, we've, we've indicated to the neighborhood through the process, we've shown the elevations. They, they're fully aware that there's a roof deck with the headhouse as well.
Just as a request, please show them.
And I, and, Mr. Bazani, did I ask you how the plans were?
Contract.
Okay. You know, Arthur? Please, before these projects come to us, make sure those garage doors look like not garage doors, okay? You've seen enough of the projects that come before us, okay? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, the applicant, complete the community process with BPDA, with multiple community meetings, and also an abates meeting, and also receive the support from the civic, Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, before I call the next one for 9:30, we did, I missed one for a deferral, so I'm going to call it in for the record. Case BOA 871-937, 1A Bernard Street is being deferred till April 9th at 11:30, so I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is at the bottom of Page 2 on the agenda, and it's being deferred to what date?
April 9th at 11:30.
Okay. Thank you.
So, call the next case for 9:30. Calling BOA 885-364-301 Saratoga Street. This is a change of occupancy from a 2-family in-store to a 3-family and a renovate to include roof deck, I'm sorry, electrical plumbing and kitchen and bath. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street, Drago and Toscano. Here with my client, Stan Klebner, the owner of 301 Saratoga Street. As was mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy from an existing 2-family with a storefront to a 3-family condominium building. Renovations will also follow. We've got renovations of electrical, plumbing, mechanicals. This particular area is a 3F 2000, so fitting right into the context of the neighborhood. Our proposed building, Condor, remains exactly the same. The unit sizes are all existing, but I'll go over them. Unit 1 would be 813 square feet, two-bed, two-bath. Unit 2 is 46, two-bed, two-bath.
I'm sorry, what was unit 2?
Sorry, Madam Chair, 846 square feet.
Okay.
And unit 3 would be 939 square foot, two-bed, two-bath. They would all have rear decks on the building as well. The only two violations that we mentioned was one, additional lot size for dwelling units because we are switching to residential. Thousands required, we have zero. Open space, 900 square feet would be required, we have 645.5.
And is that the roof deck?
Ah, yes.
Yeah. And this, so the first unit is the handicapped unit?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office on Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. During the abattoir's meeting, there were no major concerns about this proposal, and also the project received the support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Board, Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve BPDA design. We don't need reset review, okay?
It's new construction?
Inside, just rehab.
Of course.
No, no worries.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 919-606, 187 Sumner Street. This is a subdivide, the existing six, is this a companion case to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Also, companion case BOA 919-605, 191-201 Sumner Street. This is for 187, a subdivision, the existing 16,259 square foot lot into two lots. The first lot to be known as 191-201 Sumner Street, which will contain 8,978 square feet. The second lot to be known as 187 Sumner Street will contain 7,281 square feet, also to erect a seven-story building with 42 affordable residential units and five parking spaces. The violation is Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod applicability. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient usable open space. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading, insufficient parking. This is for, sorry. It's the same purpose with some different violations, so let me just go into the violations. Violation, Article 27T, it's in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking, insufficient parking for commercial and residential. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, the address of 15 Broad Street. I have with me Architect Diane Dooley from Dallas Schaefer, and also Al Calderelli from the East Boston CDC, who was the only developer of the property. As was mentioned, this proposed project is a seven-story building, and we're looking to create 42 affordable senior housing units that would be dedicated for seniors with five parking spaces on site. The existing building that's on this lot now, it's a 17-unit building, that would remain a lot with these subdivided, and this building would go in the rear of where that existing Woodbury Building stands now. This particular project was approved by the BPDA, Madam Chair.
Just a quick question before I forget. Will this, what's, what, so which is the existing lot with the, with the existing building?
So, the existing building is the structure, if you look, it's a brick structure in front.
Is this the 187 Summer?
No, the 187 is the new.
Is the new construction?
Correct.
Okay. So this is the existing, okay?
Correct. And if you take a look in the packet, it shows the smaller brick, townhouse style.
And so this includes the violations of lot area for dwelling unit, FAR, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay.
These units would, I'll just list the unit breakdown. So we're proposing 36 one-bedroom units at 571 square feet, six two-bedroom units at 817 square feet, a total of 42 units, so the average would be 606 square foot overall. This project went through extensive community outreach. I submitted a number of letters of support, along with support from all of our elected officials. There was a strong need for this kind of housing in East Boston, in particular senior housing. Although the code requirement requires 11 parking spaces on the pro zoning, so we are able to provide five, but we are very short across the street walking distance to have a T-station for anyone, visitors or residents of the building as well. I can go over the violations in more detail. The FAR allowable is 1.0, we're at 4.69. Additional lot area, 1,000 per unit, we're at 6,281. At open space, we're 300 per unit, we are at 109. Front yard is five, we're at zero. Side yard is two and a half, we're at zero on one side, three on the other. Rear yard, 30 is required, we're at three. Height for the area is three stories at 35 feet, we're at seven at 70 feet. And again, the parking, as mentioned, 11 would be required, and we're providing five.
Okay. What's the reason for subdividing it, the parcels?
It just separates the two over time for funding purposes as well. So, the Woodbury Building will eventually be rehabbed, sort of its outdated building as it stands now.
Yeah, the recent part is that the existing building was part of a program which we developed 50 years ago. Fortunately, I wasn't there at the time. But what happened is, it's, we're being funded under an MHFA program that provided 17 Section 8 units for affordable and elderly and handicapped units. Over the years, what's happened is, it's a very narrow building, so there's no real handicapped access. It's not the way it was 50 years ago. And what we found is that the individual tenants living in that building, even though they were parked, they had bedrooms on the second floor, none of them were used. There were carts and beds in their living rooms. So the question, so the time ran out on the, on the program, and we had a choice, either end it or try to renew it. But we didn't want to renew it in that building, because it made no sense. So the 17 Section 8 units will now be transferred to the new building. The existing building is now going into the AOP program, which will now provide affordable workforce housing in those 17 units.
Okay.
But not for-
Not for elderly.
Elderly or handicapped, it'll be for workforce housing. So it was a win-win. We got 17 AOP program units to get affordable housing for that, and now we got the 42 units of elderly.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate. With the combined two buildings, what is the number of units and then what is the total number of parking spaces?
So, that building has 42 units proposed, the front building has 17 units, that'd be five parking spaces total.
59 units, five parking spaces.
Correct. And under the senior housing-
How many were provided for the first building?
There were 11 units for the first building, but there's commercial in that building, and the bulk of the commercial space is our management offices for the, all of our different projects. There were, there were 10 people working in that office, and most of the parking at the time was being used to them. So what we've done is, we're now relocating all of the parking for, for those people at another site that we have. So they'll be pulled out of there.
So staff is not going to be occupying-
Right, they're going to be-
Dedicated to the last-
And the existing tenants never really parked in the lot.
As they were.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office on Neighborhood Services. During the community process for this project is one, was super easy, actually. All the abattoirs send the community who attend the meetings, they express a strong support for this project, and actually, they say that they appreciate this type of proposals in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in strong support of this proposal, and would like to thank the applicant and go on the record with her appreciation of the creation of much-needed affordable senior housing in East Boston.
Ladies and chair members of the Board, Mayor Perez, Ricardo, and Sealy, who want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Christopher Rooney from the Department of Neighborhood Development. DND recently awarded funding for the senior affordable housing component of the project, and DND is in full support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan.
I'm the Office Counselor, Michael Flaherty. Council going on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
Thomas Scarvey, 137-
Speak up, I can't hear you.
Thomas Scarvey, 137 Webster Street, East Boston. I would just like to echo those concerns about the massing of the seven-story building in a zone where most of the buildings were three to four stories tall, and the parking is clearly insufficient, even though I applaud attempts to meet the clear need for senior and affordable housing in East Boston. Parking is becoming an overwhelming concern in that neighborhood. Five parking spaces is not sufficient for 42 units.
Thank you. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 878-698-173 Trenton Street. This is a change of occupancy from a 3-family dwelling to a 4-family dwelling by legalizing existing fourth unit. Also to renovate the building, including reconstructing existing rear decks and installing a sprinkler system in the building and propose four off-street parking. The violation, Article 53, Section 8, a 4-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading required, maneuverability areas are insufficient. The driveway aisle is less than 10 feet. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano, the address of 15 Broad Street. To my right, Matt Echol from my office, Stan Klebner, and the owner and developer, and Adam Last, the architect in the project. As was mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy from an existing 3-family building to a 4-family. This will also improve the pre-renovations of the structure, install the sprinkler system, and creating four off-street parking spaces. Right now, there's an existing curb-cutting driveway, it could only hold one, maybe two tandem spots. This will create four legal parking spaces in the back of the building. This particular district is a 3F 2000. Just to go over the violations, 3-family is allowed, we're proposing four. Additional lot size for dwelling unit required is 1,000, we're at 333.
I'm sorry, you're at 333?
33. The FAR allowable is 1.0, we're at 1.32. Although this is pre-existing, since we're not adding any additional space in the building, it's all existing space that we're working with. Parking maneuverability, the driveway is slightly less than 10 feet, it's at 9.16, but it is existing. Parking was incorrectly cited. 1.75 per dwelling unit is what's required, and we're actually proposing four spaces, so to meet the parking requirement. The unit sizes for this building? Unit 1 would be a 797 square foot unit, it's garden level, it's 60% exposed above grade. It would be a two-bedroom, one-bath with eight-foot-seven ceilings. Unit 2 is a 930 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with rear deck. Unit 3, 987 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with rear deck. And unit 4, 997 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with a rear deck. This was approved by the Eagle Hill Civic Association. We had a lot of support in our abattoir's meeting as well to clean up the building, renovated and created parking. I can pause now for any questions.
So which, so the basement unit is the handicapped unit? Is that what it is?
So the handicapped accessible unit.
We're going to be applying for abattoir's stakeboard, because we have no place around.
Right, so the existing unit that's down there now, that's existing, there's no way to get it to a handicapped accessibility, so we won't cite it for it, but it's just, it's all existing, so there'd be no way to act.
And tell us, I don't recall, okay, so the, so these are tandem parking, no, these are four straight compact spaces?
Correct. And right now, it's just a driveway, they could legally have one spot on it now.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are fine. So, Councilors, you're removing the bay on the right side, is that correct?
Correct.
And with that, you have nine, nine feet one and a quarter inches.
Correct. Because right now, the existing building structure has three units, but one unit is a large 1,970 square foot unit, so that would be-
Right. Is there existing parking there now?
There's only one spot. So there's an existing curb-
And that's in front of the bay?
Correct.
It was a kind of, it was a kind of by the bay.
Correct. With the bay, there's only about 16, so you can't get it.
But you're demoing the bay all the way up? Because really, you wouldn't need to, right?
Right, we could restore the bay at the third floor, for sure.
Are you going to?
I'd like to, yes.
Oh. So, I'm a little confused, but what's the access to the garden apartment of the unit 1?
Access through a new stair in the front, off the front entry lobby, and through the rear, through a walkout.
So the rear of the building is at 30?
Yeah, the rear I see. I don't see in the front. Maybe it's missing. Oh, I, oh, okay. And I also see the existing chimneys to be removed?
Correct.
So where, how will the, how will it be expanded?
We can create new chases.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office on Neighborhood Services. We host an abattoir's meeting on October 2025, 2018. During the abattoir's meeting, no major concerns were expressed about this proposal, and also they received the support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Ducrey. I live at 179 Trenton Street, next door. I'm in support of the project, and I hope that they would clean up the place, get rid of the pool in the backyard, and I hope it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve-
Maybe BPDA design, if you saw the bay, or whatever the changes to the exterior that you may make.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to recall the next, a couple of cases that came in for deferral. We're going to recall the two, ones in East Boston. Can you please read them for the record?
Do you want to put them up at the same time?
Yes, because, yes.
Is 251 to 253 Meridian Street still here?
Can you please?
And also Maverick Square, 6971 Maverick Square.
For both these cases, in a couple of months ago, we had one case that was before us that was looking to provide medical marijuana sales in the city of Boston. As a board, we are concerned about having too much of a lag between cases because we are concerned that one facility or one neighborhood where this facility pops up may just be overwhelmed. So we're going to re-notice these cases. We put them on the record because we are still going with the deferral. However, we're going to look at changing the dates of the referral on both cases.
So I'm going to, Madam Chair, I'm going to call them back in for the record. For the record, calling BOA 859-149-251 to 253 Meridian Street. BOA 922-475-69 to 71 Maverick Square. They have an original date of July 9 of 2019. So we're going to have to look at getting a sooner date.
What works, Mr. Fortune?
We can actually squeeze them in on the 26th of March.
So this is, this is March 26? Okay.
The deferral date of March 26.
So I think neighborhood residents are still here? And representatives from both facilities are still here? So this is a reminder that we will rehear these cases on March 26 at 11:30. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Going on with the rest of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go back to the cases for 9:30, calling BOA 916-798-80 to 82 SUMMER STREET. This is a change of occupancy from an office, restaurant, three apartments to a restaurant and four apartments. The violation, Article 13, Section 4, dwelling in a non-residential district. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Zerola, 19 Peters Hill Road in Weston.
So tell us what's being proposed here?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a five-story building. There are currently three residential units. It used to be all commercial and one restaurant. Our unit that we purchased is the last commercial unit, and we're looking to make it residential. So to make the building a one-restaurant on the first floor and all restaurants, excuse me, and all residential upstairs. There is no structural work that's being requested, there's no additions that's being requested, it's just converting the existing space into residential.
How many square feet is this space?
2,350 square feet.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did do a community process related to this project, and we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 915-460-71 to 73 GAINESBURROW STREET. This is within existing volume, create a garden-level unit to change the occupancy from nine-unit building to a 10-unit building. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Article 66, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Peter Vanco, 407 Dudley Street.
So tell us what's being proposed?
We are seeking a 10th unit in a nine-story building. There is available garden-level space that is currently used for storage. We're proposing that the apartment that we're proposing occupies space and volume that is currently there, we're not digging down in any way, shape, or fashion.
What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Almost 10 feet.
Okay. And how are you meeting the, are you meeting the G-Cod applicability?
That's actually something that we need to ask the boards' favor on. I don't know of variance here is an opportunity. In this case, we believe that G-Cod's been improperly applied to us. There's two reasons. One is that in no way are we affecting groundwater levels in the district through the insertion of an apartment into an existing volume. To have to put in a $40,000 system seems unreasonable to manage all of the stormwater.
Well, we need to, so the citation was 324 is, and this is GAINESBURROW, 324 is a G-Cod violation, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I will tell you straight out that that cost has never been a factor. If you've been cited means that, in fact, that is what ISD has found as a violation. And we are very strict about not giving relief on G-Cod.
Well, I think then we need to talk then more with ISD about applicability.
Let's get a deferral on this, then.
Motion for a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
Squeeze in, June 25.
So the date is June 25 at 11:30?
Looks good for us, thank you.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 884-514, 120 Brookline Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to the lowest level of a three-story building for office use to a cannabis establishment use. The violation, Article 66, Section 11, cannabis establishment is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chris Rainier from Goldstone Stores. Before we start, I do have some boards I could put up, but I don't want to mess up the television camera, if you want to direct.
I think the issue is that you're here seeking relief before us.
Yes.
So you need to make sure that we have whatever we need to understand the case. So if you need to put boards up, put boards up so that we are informed.
Thank you, just give me a second, thank you.
In the meantime, will you put your name and address on the record?
Morgan Sokol from 120 Brookline Avenue.
Okay. And speak up, because those are taping.
Rob Esparza from 120 Brookline.
Okay.
Counselor, why are you doing that? Let me ask you a question. Do those boards reflect the drawings that you submitted with ISD or other supplemental tools?
These are illustrative plans, Mr. Bizani, that show proposed changes to the exterior. This is a change of occupancy for the interior of the building, so they are not detailed.
So the plans that you originally submitted with ISD are still operating?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, we know context, so yeah, those would be actually helpful to us.
Great.
Okay, so please put your name and address on the record.
Chris Rainier from Goldstone Stores, on behalf of Samuels and Associates, the landowner of this property through their affiliate Fenway Enterprises, 120 Brookline Avenue. I believe you guys already introduced yourselves.
Yes, waiting on you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. This property is located at 120 Brookline Avenue. It's an existing three-story office building. The proposal is for a conditional use permit to change the occupancy of the first floor from an office use to a cannabis establishment use. This is a conditional use in this zoning district. We think it's a wonderful location for this use. The property is proximate to complimentary uses, retail, medical, and commercial uses in the area.
So please jump right to it and tell us about the operations, hours, et cetera.
Certainly. Getting to the operation of it, I do want to mention we're proximate to Fenway Square, public transit. There's over 3,000 publicly available parking spaces in the area. And also briefly about operations, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Sokol to go over a little more on MedMen and the operations. MedMen operates in 19 other locations, in other highly regulated locations. They've never had an operational violation. When they operate at this location, they will always have at least two security guards on duty. At times of higher demand, they will supplement that with additional security guards. The security guards will police both the interior and the exterior of the property and ensure that there's no on-site use or consumption of the products being sold. We feel there's a very positive climate and revenue situation from this use. MedMen is a union employer. They've entered into a host-community agreement with the city of Boston, providing for a 3% gross sales revenue share. This host-security agreement also provides for a security plan, as well as hours of operation restricted to Monday through Saturday, 10 to 7, and Sunday 11 to 6.
Sorry, Sunday, Sunday 11 to 6? Okay.
With no operations on legal holidays.
Okay.
The property, the host-community agreement also calls for MedMen to work with the city to establish preferences for Boston resident and minority hiring programs. This building, what we're seeing here on the left is the primary entrance. It's not directly on Brookline Avenue, there'll be no entrance from Brookline Avenue. This is the Brookline Avenue facade. There'll be an entrance down the alley, which is actually on the property, which allows for sufficient queuing, should there be times of high demand. There's also an entry on the back of the building, and there's a substantial rear yard, open rear yard as well. So there'll be two ways to enter this door. And this rendering inside this door is from the same perspective. So the entry on the left, you can see, is up those stairs, and then the site gently slopes to the rear to provide handicap access from entry in the rear. So we're very excited to move forward with this proposal. I believe we may be one of the first in front of this board, so I did want to give Ms. Sokol an opportunity to talk about MedMen and talk a little bit more about the operations.
We want to focus very clearly on operations. We've seen another, another project, so we'd like to hear about your operations.
And maybe just before she begins, I forgot, we do have a letter of support. I did email that to the board, but it was only this morning, so I do want to put that into the record. Thank you.
So speak up, because sometimes that doesn't clearly.
Sure, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Morgan Sokol, and I'm Senior Vice President of Government Relations at MedMen. MedMen is the nation's leader in legal cannabis, particularly in retail. We focus on compliance, security, and operate in 12 states across the United States, as well as Canada, and employ over 1,200 people.
Is this your first Massachusetts location?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
We anticipate having about 20 employees at this retail location. We were particularly drawn to Boston and the Fenway neighborhood for its unique and dynamic culture, and are excited to play a role in supporting local community organizations. The proximity to medical research, quality medical care, and research institutions is aligned with our vision to de-stigmatize marijuana. We believe diversity and inclusion must be a central tenet of any cannabis business to undo the harms that the failed war on drugs had on communities of color. Nationally, we are diverse and inclusive.
Well, operations?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Did you think of any more compliance operations?
Sure. We pride ourselves in setting the gold standard for compliant operations. Our 10-person legal and compliance team is responsible for developing our standard operating procedures, audits, and daily checks to ensure we're always in compliance with state and local regulations. We spend significant time training our employees and crafting education campaigns to help our customers, especially those that are new to cannabis. We teach proper dosing of product, hold first-time user consumer trainings, safe consumption trainings, and how to safely store product at home away from underage family members. The safety and security of our customers, staff, and surrounding community are our primary priority.
So tell us, when somebody enters your door, how, what, what, what happens to them? Is there a check-in? What happens?
So prior to entering, we have a security member standing outside of the facility that will swipe their ID to ensure that only people 21 ages and older are able to enter. Then upon entering, they will go through a check-in desk where we also clarify that they are of age, so there's two points of check before they can come in. Only those folks that have been checked in are able to purchase product, there is no way to purchase product otherwise. We also pride ourselves in having a clear and transparent operating retail facility, so our windows are clear and open, but because the entrance is not on Brookline Avenue, you can't see anything from outside of Brookline Avenue. But from the sides and from the back, there are clear windows, and that's part of something that sets MedMen apart. In addition, even though there are clear windows, you won't be able to see any product when you are inside the facility. Our display tables that you can see there have iPads on them, so folks that want to learn more about the different products can see it, and all of the testing information is on those iPad displays. We also have a ton of different hospitality associates that are well-trained to help new consumers in the market.
So once somebody decides on a purchase, how, how is that taken care of?
They will speak with a hospitality associate, then the hospitality associate goes to the backside, which is more along the right side, where there's an additional associate that will retrieve the product from the back secure area. All product is kept in a secure vault and will only be taken out upon a customer requesting the product. And then they will go through the checkout procedure that is all linked to our point-of-sale system where everything is tracked digitally in alignment with the local and state regulations.
So everything is brought in prepackaged? There's no packaging or carding onsite?
Correct, there's no packaging onsite.
Okay. And will there be edibles?
Edibles will be available in, as long as it is aligned with the state regulations.
Okay. And what's the security firm you're working with?
We have an internal security team that we work with, and Rob Esparza here is our law enforcement liaison, and he can speak more to our security operations if you'd like.
Well, good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Rob Esparza, and I am the law enforcement liaison for MedMen. And I'm here to talk about our security plan here. I want you to understand that the safety and security of our customers and the surrounding community are our primary concerns. We have a robust and enhanced security system with CCTV, high-def cameras inside the facility and outside the facility here, blanket coverage here, so we minimize diversion. One of the things that we do is our crime prevention through environmental design is adding the additional lighting and the landscaping here, and so we push out the threat here. We're very law enforcement friendly here, and we will work with the local law enforcement community here on everything from education of product to our internal security plan here. We, I know some of the concerns here is with the Fenway Park proximity here. We have a security plan that we have submitted with the Boston Red Sox, as well as law enforcement here, that we will enhance our security on heavy-volume days here by either using a daisy chain environment where we rope and stanchion, or barricades here, and we'll control ingress and egress with additional security members to make sure that there's no impact.
What happens on game days?
So based on our hours of operation, we close at 7:00 PM on weekdays and 6:00 PM on Sundays, so we anticipate being closed when any kind of games start, but we recognize that there are folks that arrive early. On those days, we will increase the number of security officers, and we have specifically created a queuing plan that lines up along the side off of Brookline Avenue, as well as the back near Van Ness Street, that allows for multiple lines of people that can queue up. We will also have security guards that are standing outside that will be doing people tickers to ensure that we never exceed the occupancy limit inside.
And what is the occupancy?
I don't know about that.
Okay. Okay, and will there be a number posted on the exterior of the building? Should there be night activity in proximity of the, your door or your windows?
Phone number?
Yep.
Yes, we will have a community liaison specifically assigned to this place, and we will have their phone number posted on the exterior.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Plans are adequate, but I do have a question. How many clients, patrons do you anticipate? How many clients, patrons do you anticipate in a day?
What happens in shops a day?
I don't think we've done a specific demand study.
What does your business model show? I mean, you must have a business model that says, that says viable if we do X number of transactions per day. What is it?
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
We, we don't know the number off the top of our head. I think we anticipate that it may be busier when it opens, as you may anticipate, but as other stores open in Boston or other areas in the Commonwealth, it will, it will be more of a neighborhood retail operation.
So what is the actual transmission time? That is from the time a person appears outside and has his ID checked until he receives his goods and leaves. Approximately is that?
Around 15 minutes, but we will regularly be revisiting the time that it takes people to make their way through, and it will also depend on whether they're a first-time consumer or returning customer. And based on the customer flow, we will adjust the different traffic patterns that we are creating internally to accommodate the number of people that we're seeing every day.
Based on your other sites, where in the approximate, what's the split between those that arrive by vehicular means versus pedestrian versus public?
So it really depends upon the area in which we operate. In the city of Los Angeles, we encourage ride-sharing and alternative methods of transportation outside of using cars for a couple of reasons. One, just parking can sometimes be a challenge in other cities where we operate, but also we want to promote safe practices of folks. There is no consumption onsite or around. Our security team does perimeter walks to ensure that there is no loitering or onsite or nearby consumption, but we still want to promote alternative forms of transportation.
Any other questions?
Do any of your other sites in any of the other cities that you're in, are they as, as close to a venue like Fenway Park in other cities? And what's your experience there?
I would say the most analogous situation is in downtown, downtown Los Angeles, close to the Staples Center. And it is also a place where there have been a lot of different marches and events in downtown Los Angeles. We, we learn and are reflective as we go through every process to make sure that upon each different scenario, we are improving how we are operating, but Rob can also speak more towards how we accommodate.
And I think one of the, the things to mention here, that I didn't mention earlier here, is we have a 24-hour, 7 global security operations center that monitors all of our facility, internal and external cameras throughout every location we operate, whether it's cultivation, distribution, or retail. So I wanted to mention that, monitor 24/7. Second thing here is, is part of my responsibility of the job is, is that I work with law enforcement here, and they'll give, and we, each week I get an update of what events are coming on, and then we'll make adjustments if we need to, more, you know, if we need to add additional security here, or let our team know that there's a protest or something that's going on nearby. So part of that, my responsibility as the law enforcement liaison, is to make sure that I'm exchanging this information, and it's a two-way street.
Are you Boston-based?
I'm based out of Los Angeles, but I have the continental U.S.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a question?
I do. Are you going to limit the hours during sporting events and concerts?
They, they will be the same hours in the, in the host community agreement with the city of Boston.
But you say you're closing at 7 every night?
Correct. And Sundays at 6. And no, and no holidays.
So there will never be a period when you're open for nighttime events?
Correct.
And will you be doing shipping from the site, or does that come from a central location elsewhere?
There will not be any external shipping, so we won't ship away from the site, but we will be accepting deliveries.
How often do you get deliveries in the course of a typical day?
It varies based on, on the needs here. It could be once or twice a week, or once or twice every other week, just depending on, on the amount of product that we have sold.
And I have another question. So you have hospitality people, you said, you know, so we don't know how many people are coming into the site, but we have, we have, how many people are you going to staff?
We anticipate having 20 retail associates onsite.
So those retail associates, do you think that's going to be one-on-one, or do you think that's going to be, you know, one for every two people? Or how, how do you think that's going to work?
So we try to have a really strong ratio to assist folks that are new to the space, and in our experience, there are a lot of new consumers coming into the regulated cannabis space, so we try to have about three-to-one ratio of staff to customers.
Now, so you mentioned that the company was a union employer.
Yes.
Covering the 20, you're talking about the employees onsite, and what union is that?
Yeah. So the United Food and Commercial Workers Union is our partners in California and New York. We also have them here today. We have the strongest collective bargaining agreement with UFCW, according to UFCW in the United States for cannabis business. All of our retail employees in California and all of our staff in New York are part of the collective bargaining agreement. We offer full and part-time employees living wages, as well as full healthcare benefits. And we're also a publicly traded company in Canada. We're traded on the Canadian Securities Exchange. So additionally, we provide stock options to all of our employees, so they're not just employees at MedMen, they're also owners of MedMen.
Even, excuse me, Madam Chair. Even with the idea of anticipating high, high-volume activities, what is the sense of flexibility with your security staff getting them onsite, and where would they come from? The phones?
Certainly. I, I will tell you that one thing that's about our company here is, is that we realize that we can put the most robust security plan together here, but it has to be fluid, based on the situation, based on the needs here. We're going to employ from the local area, obviously because they're, they're going to have that, that, that understanding of the, of the beautiful downtown Fenway area, and we love hiring from, from within. But I, but I will tell you something here, and we told this to the Boston Red Sox here, if we put a security plan together and, and we need to make adjustments, we'll revisit it, and we'll do, we'll keep doing it until we get it right.
So the, the focus of my question, you have a flash mob, if you will, and you need to get 10 extra people. How do you get them deployed, get them onsite and deployed to control the?
Well, we have a national security vendor that provides all of our external security, who has a, operations throughout the continental U.S., including Boston. And if we need additional resources here, they can supply them upon demand.
I, I, I do have another question. How big is the space? Did you, I don't, I might have missed that.
Let me check my, my papers.
Jocelyn Pettway, our Director of Design.
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback on the fellow commissioner over here. So if it's a three-to-one ratio, so it's possibly you're going to have 60 people in there at any given time. Correct?
So we need to check on the occupancy limit. We will ensure that we are following the occupancy.
Because I believe this board just approved Friend Street, and I think the, one of the things is not more than 20 people in that space at any given time. I could be wrong there, just going back a little bit.
Well, if, if we can hear from Joyceon about the size of the space, because it is a generous, generous space.
Right.
It's the entire first floor.
So the only reason why I say that, it's going to be a busy area, as, as well as the North Station area, but you also have colleges in that area, you also have the hospitals in that area. So it's a very congested area, as we all know. So that, one of the questions I think this board needs to hear is, what is the capacity? How many people are going to be in there at any given time? How many people are going to be on the sidewalk? You know, is traffic going to be impaired, obviously?
Certainly. And we'll, we'll let Joyceon speak to the size of the building, but we do have substantial onsite queuing and do anticipate continuing to work with the city of Boston Police Department on an evolving basis on the security and queuing plan.
Go ahead.
And, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Hi. Sorry, Jocelyn Pettway. I'm part of the design team. So the square footage of our space overall, 7,521 square foot, with 4,725 square foot dedicated to the sales floor. I don't have the occupancy off the top of my head here, but we will be pursuing mercantile occupancy, and we have two entrances and exits in our space. We plan on using them strategically to help alleviate any traffic congestion we may get, but in case of emergency, and to increase our occupancy load, we plan on using both of those exits.
Given that you're going to pursue mercantile occupancy, what's the square footage requirement for mercantile per person?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. Sorry. I think I have backup.
Hi, I'm Sam Lar. I'm MedMen's in-house architect. And so, yeah, we're pursuing mercantile. Mercantile is at 60 square feet per occupant, and at 4,700, that's about, I did a quick calculation, 78 occupants. However, like, as Jocelyn said, we have two exits, fire exits, and so we're hoping that we can get an occupancy that's a little slightly higher than that.
Right. But if you have 80 people in there.
Yes.
At a time, with a staff ratio of three-to-one, or one-to-three, so that adds another almost 30.
We're using just code and not actual, so, I'm sorry, your question was about code, or?
Well, it was, well, trying to get to the occupancy and then to get a sense of how many people are going to be in there, and then what your employee ratio would actually be.
Got it.
Find what the total is.
Got it. So it's a mercantile occupancy, so it'll be a potential of 78 occupants, potential.
But a maximum of 20 staff?
I don't think that's maximum. I think that's anticipated staff, and I think we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. Also, as part of our design, obviously, we want everyone to have a concierge experience where they're being taken through with a, with one of our retail associates and being given a tour of our space every time and of our product. But one of the things that we encourage people to do is to explore the store at their own pace. That's part of the reason we have all this information available on the iPad. So if necessary, we can spread ourselves a little bit thinner, at least on the retail associates, so people are allowed to browse and explore product choices through the iPads and gain information that way, rather than just having a one-on-one experience. We like to provide both.
And will there be a web presence so, so people can do their research prior to walking in your store?
Yes. Our website includes, in the other jurisdictions where we operate, the website includes a menu of the different products that are available. And we will also have information about our store hours and ways to become a, ways to access the facility in terms of transportation and parking.
And one last question, well, from me, anyway. How do you anticipate hiring? What, do you have a hiring plan? Is there an organization you're working with so that you get, you get a good, a good solid team together?
So it's really important in every place where we operate that our retail staff reflects the community and surrounding community. We are really proud to partner with the GSO Foundation, which is the Green Soul Organics Foundation. They are creating a workforce development training program to take folks from the inner city and communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the failed war on drugs, and provide them training opportunities in the cannabis industry.
Do you have a Boston presence?
The GSO Foundation?
Yes.
Yes. They are being established, they, we are working with them to become established. We have committed $1 million in seed funding to them, as well as 0.5% of our gross revenue on a continued basis to continue funding them. And they are one of the letters of support that we provided today. Additionally, we'll be working with UFCW on local hiring, and as part of our diversity and inclusion plan, which we are submitting to the state as our, part of our state application, we also talk about different ways that we recruit in order to have a wide net that is inclusive of all different kinds of communities and folks at our store. We go to job fairs, we recruit from different professional diverse hiring groups and societies, and we also do an unconscious bias training of all of our managers to ensure that we're being inclusive in our hiring choices.
Excellent. One last question?
One last question. Do you find that in your other sites that have been operating for a while, that there are repeat customers, and even so, maybe the 15 minutes on the first visit, but then they just walk in, know what they want, and walk out?
Yes. What we also offer in places like Los Angeles is in-store pickup, so you can order online based on the menu that is on the website, and then when you come in, it's a much faster transaction and pickup.
How many people do that, and what percentage of your sales are done that way in Los Angeles?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but happy to provide it afterwards.
And before that, is there a limit to the amount that an individual can purchase?
Yes. We follow state regulations as to the daily limits that you can dispense.
It's a daily limit?
It's a daily, it's ultimately a possession limit, but based on the possession limit, that is how we calculate the daily purchase limits.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Okay. Okay. Let's, let's just hold on. Let's, let's just get a handle on this. Okay? So let's have representatives of elected officials, please line up. I'd like five community representatives. And anybody else who's here to support, please put your hands up so we can recognize you.
We have two speakers.
Okay. So total of, so, okay, hold on. So let's get five people behind Gisele and have elected officials come up first, representatives of elected officials. Okay, are there five people behind you? Excellent. Go ahead. Go ahead.
My name is Chair Members of the Board, Gisele Groh, at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to go on record in support. They have completed their community process way back in September. During that time, a lot of the community concerns had to do with the operations, such as what is the building now? What will it be? How will the lines be queued up? Will there be cooperation with BPD? One of the biggest and things that we are going to hold this company to is their commitment to expunging some of the, or actually enforcing and repealing the war on drugs. So they have, in that sense, hosted a job fair at the Roxbury Community College, and they have also ran a quarry expungement clinic. We will continue to hold them to that investment initiative at this time. We do feel confident that this is a proposal that should be considered before you're moving forward. We have no questions or concerns at this time. We just ask that they continue to work with the Fenway community with upcoming meetings, which they have done since the point of their meeting, but we hold them and expect that they will continue to, to hold such conversations with our office and also with the civics in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Winter Brown. I, I live 10 minutes away from the 120 Brookline.
Go ahead, please.
907 Boylston Street. I'm an avid non-smoker, private service military, but I am in support of the facility.
Thank you.
Executive Director of the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance, Nicole Snow, 1 Beacon Street. The Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance would like to express their full support for this adult-use facility at 120 Brookline Avenue, but I would like to note that currently the sensitive use requirements for adult use and medical do not match. There's a 500-foot buffer zone preventing MedMen from offering access to medical program at this time. So I'd like to note, should the ZBA and Cannabis Control Commission align the zoning regulations to match adult-use zoning regulations, MedMen would be allowed to co-locate the adult-use and medical dispensary at 120 Brookline Avenue. This would be most preferable to the patients that the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance represents in the Fenway neighborhood. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Megan Carvallo. I'm the organizing director for UFCW Local 328, also representing UFCW Local 1445 today. As MedMen explained, we have a relationship, a partnership with them across the country, and we are in support of them opening up in the Fenway neighborhood. We represent members who live and work in the Fenway neighborhood, and we are excited to partner with them going forward. Thank you.
One of my little chair members of the board, my representative, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Justin Springer from 53 Adams Street in Boston, Massachusetts. I also have a business venture in the, in the surrounding area, in full support of their community engagement plan.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is anybody, I just have, are you speaking in opposition? Mr. Biggesta?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Nancy Welsh, and I'm an attorney at DLA Piper. I'm here on behalf of the owner of 109 Brookline Avenue Commonwealth Equity, Equity Commonwealth, rather. And they would like to respectfully request that any decision be delayed so that their tenants have an opportunity to voice their opinions on the matter. Their tenants include medical providers and lab spaces, and they just have not yet had a chance to develop a full-throated position either way, so, thank you. and they just have not yet had a chance to develop a full-throated position either way, so, thank you.
Sorry, who do you represent? I missed that part, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
109 Brookline Avenue, it's at Equity Commonwealth.
It's what?
Equity Commonwealth.
Equity company, thank you.
So I'm assuming that you will continue conversations, thank you.
Correct.
Is there anybody here who's from Greensoul Foundation? Are you from Greensoul? Because we have a letter here, it's a new foundation, you just want to have a face to it.
Yeah.
And your name is?
My name is David Hughes, I work with the founder of Greensoul Foundation.
Excellent, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Could I, do we need PPA?
We don't need design review. I would like to attach proviso that it goes with this applicant only.
Okay, so there's a motion with the proviso to this applicant only?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso.
So it's now eleven o'clock. I'm going to call, are there any 1030s for withdrawals or deferrals? 1030s only for withdrawals or deferrals. Okay? I'm going to call the next case. Calling BOA 919-270-52-HARRIFITSTREET. This is a change of occupancy from one retail, one frozen yogurt shop with takeout and outdoor seating, seven offices, hair salon with massage and cafe, takeout and outdoor seating. One retail, seven offices, hair salon with massage. Work includes replacing floors and countertops and all safety systems to remain. Work to be done at 305 Newbury Street. Violation of Article 8, Section 6, pre-existing conditional use, and Article 6, Section 4, other conditional necessary for protection. So is the address 52 Harrifit or 305 Newbury?
It's, it's 52 Harrifit Street in the ISD system.
So work to be done at 305? Is there work being done at 305?
Yes, it's the same location. I think 305 is the mailing address, but the ISD address is 52.
Okay, name an address for the record, please.
Mylaim 1582 Dorchester Avenue.
Eric Lee. Good morning, today we're asking for a change of existing conditions from what is currently a coffee shop and changing that to a bubble tea shop with desserts. The owner here, Eric Lee, owns Cocoa Leaf and Fields Corner. This would be his second location, and we're looking to take over the lease of the current business.
So on Harrifit at Newbury, is it, which corner is it? Is it closer to the?
It's Newbury and Harrifit.
Yes, I know, but which corner is it? There's, it's, is it where Steve's used to be?
I'm not familiar with Steve.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. So, so you're requesting takeout use?
Yes.
Okay, and you have experience with takeout?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Biggess?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Giselle Groh at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. They have community support, and we have no questions or concerns at this time, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Laff from Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. First, to clarify your question, it's across the street from Steve's, it's the residential side.
Yes, okay. There used to be that framing shop all those years ago, for a long time.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's accurate.
Yep.
So we met with the applicant, and we are not opposed on the basis that they're going to do no cooking on-site. Their hours are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Deliveries, they agreed, would be from Harrifit Street between 8:00 and 10:00 a.m. And the trash will be stored in locked 96-gallon totes in a locked storage area off the public alley.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling the next four cases, calling BOA 915-720-85-Newbury Street. Companion case with building code BOA 915-722-85-Newbury Street. Case BOA 923-530-530, 91-Newbury Street. It's also companion case with building code at BOA 932-522-91-Newbury Street. This is for 85-Newbury. This is an expanding existing restaurant, use item 37 to 36A, called The Thinking Cup, into an adjacent building at 91 Newbury Street by creating the opening in a fire potty wall and installing a fire shutter. Violation of Article 8, Section 7, use of a restaurant item 36A or 37 is conditional. Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. This is the building code for 85. This is potty walls, 706.1.1. Any wall located on the lot line between adjacent buildings, which is used or adapted for joint service between the two buildings, shall be constructed as a firewall in accordance with the Section 706. Potty walls shall be constructed without openings and shall create separate buildings. This is for 91-Newbury Street. It's a change of occupancy, include use items 37, 36A. Open fire potty walls to allow expansion of existing restaurant The Thinking Cup at 85 into the ground level of 91-Newbury Street. The violations are the same as the previous. And building code is also the same as previous. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tom Miller, I'm a contractor, 28 State Street in Boston. With me here are Mario Ferrera, building ownership, building management, Tom Tukowski, the architect, and Doug Anderson, C-Cubed Consulting, the co-consultor.
Okay, please, as we usually proceed on these, can you have somebody speak to the building code requirements?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Doug Anderson, C-Cubed. We have two separate buildings with separate utilities, and so the property line between the two buildings down the center of the firewall is called a party wall. And since Massachusetts adopted the International Building Code back in 2009, I think, openings in party walls have been prohibited. So the proposal, that's why we're here, is to offer, they would obviously need an opening in this party wall to operate the cafe as a single entity. We are proposing a three-hour fire shutter in this opening. It's a very minimal opening, it's only, it's less than four feet wide, if I recall. And the shutter would be activated by smoke detectors on each side of the fire shutter. It's a, it's actually code-required activation. 85-Newbury is fully sprinkled, 91 is not. However, the three-hour fire shutter is the same fire resistance rating at a minimum as the existing minimum three-wife of brick thickness of the existing party wall between the buildings. So in terms of providing an equivalent level of safety, the fire shutter will do that.
And both 85 and 91 have egress, external egress provided?
Yes, the egress on either side is independent. So there's no requirement that you traverse the party wall to egress either side.
What is this shutter made of? What are the materials?
They're typically steel. They're pretty heavy steel frame, they're coiled up in a big box. And then you've got steel, kind of like big, heavy Unistrut guides down the side that the shutter just rolls down. It's a, it's a spring loader, it's held back, and then it, gravity drops it, they're pretty heavy.
And what hours would it be, open to whatever, would it be closed?
The shutter would probably remain permanently open. It's not the type, it's not a security shutter. It's not designed to be operated every day. It's designed for one purpose, and that is as a fire shutter. It's not like one of those security grates that you see pulled down.
And is it three hours?
Yes.
It's three hours?
Three hours, yes.
Mr. Biggess?
This method has been utilized many times. I make a motion to grant the building code.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, now to the meat of the matter.
Madam Chair, the expansion of the cafe from 85 into 91 requires conditional use in this area. It is, they are expanding just the seating area, they're not expanding any of the, any of the cooking facilities or any of the service space. It's just adding seating to a restaurant that is already existing, well-loved in the community, and they're busy, which is why they need the additional space, that's why the lease is a lot.
What's the increase capacity? How many additional seats?
It's sixteen additional interior seats to the existing space, from 44 to 60.
Sorry, 44?
From 44 existing to 60 total.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Biggess?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Giselle Groh at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. They had a community process where no one expressed any issues or concerns. So at this point, we have no questions or concerns, we would like to move forward, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Laff from Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. We're not in opposition based on the fact that there'd be no cooking in the new space and that they committed to indoor storage of trash in their, in their space.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
What, what percentage of the food will be eaten on-site as opposed to takeout? Guess, guess.
To be honest, I do not know. It would, my guess is it would actually increase from what is currently the?
But I guess, is it a substantial amount of takeout?
Thank you. I think currently The Thinking Cup is 37.
Okay, all right, well, then I would make a motion to, to approve with the review of takeout, I guess.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that proviso.
13173-163-Newbury Street. This is a change of occupancy, including second restaurant, use item 37, and takeout, use item 36A. Tenant fit out on the first floor at a red trash enclosure, six-seat front outdoor patio seating per companion use of premise. The violation of Article 8, Section 7, use item 36A takeout is conditional. Article, Article 8, Section 7, use item 37 restaurant is conditional. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott Coltien Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. With me to my immediate left is Lauren Cowe from the Lawrence Group, the architect. And to my far left is Carrie Walcott from Blue Bottle Coffee. So Blue Bottle Coffee and Restaurant is proposing to be located at 163 Newbury Street. It's on the corner of Dartmouth Street. Blue Bottle has three existing locations in the city of Boston, in Cambridge, Harvard Square, 100 Federal Street, and the Prudential Building down the street in Back Bay. They also have 66 or so other locations worldwide. They are very well-run operation. The premises itself is a little under 1,500 square feet, proposing approximately 20 seats indoors, as well as the addition of a small, very small outdoor patio at street level for six outdoor seats on Newbury Street. Proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so seven days a week, pretty standard, not open late, not open too early. As discussed with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, no cooking or baking is proposed on-site at the premises, merely toasting and basic food preparation, coffee preparation. There's no oven on-site, no major cooking instruments on-site. They've also made a commitment with the neighborhood group, as is typical, to have indoor storage of trash. Work to have trash storage after 9:00 a.m. and to work with, there is a restaurant tenant below, which this board approved maybe six months ago for Double Zero Restaurant at the garden level. And they are going to work with that restaurant to coordinate trash pickup to make sure that it has a minimal impact on the neighborhood. And they've also agreed finally to have deliveries on the Newbury Street side versus the rear alley, which abuts the Commonwealth Ave residents who share that private alley. We did hold in a butter meeting on February 4th. We also met with the Neighborhood Association on February 4th. And I will state that we are in the Back Bay Architectural District, so we will be going to that group for historic review. As such, I would ask if there is an approval today to not have a proviso of design review, as we will be doing that with the Historic Commission already.
How are the plans, Mr. Biggess?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Giselle Groh at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. They have support from the community. The only concern that was raised at the butters meeting had to do with trash storage, which they have agreed to work with the constituents. Aside from that, everyone made it very clear that they were in support of Blue Bottle Coffee coming to this location. We have no questions or concerns.
So coffee and yogurt, right?
Yes, we have no questions or concerns at this time.
Heavy coffee pouring. Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Laff from Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. Based on the commitments that were made and that the attorney went through, that the deliveries be from Newbury Street, and that there be indoor storage of trash, trash picked up after 9:00 a.m., or scheduled for pickup after 9:00 a.m., no cooking except for toasting, we're not opposed.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With the usual takeout language, Mr. Biggess?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Samples are always helpful. Samples are always helpful.
Thanks.
Hey, it's calling BOA 905-269-580 East Broadway. This is a change of occupancy from a single-family dwelling to a one-story with five-family dwelling. Construct a new rare addition, fourth-story addition, and a roof deck. Proposed four-car parking garage, so full renovation. The violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston I-Pod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancy, I'm the attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Walton. Madam Chair, members, this is a renovation of an existing building at 580 East Broadway, which is located between H and I Street. The building fronts on East Broadway. It is a block-through lot. As the block, the block narrows as Emerson Street comes down in the rear, this site runs through to Emerson Street from East Broadway. This is a change of occupancy. It's an existing single-family on the first floor. For many, many years, it has been used essentially as dead storage for a local attorney. Before that, it was his father's plumbing storage center and office. It has been used, as I say, over the past couple of decades simply to store the attorney's files. The attorney is the owner of the building. It's in a row of rowhouse buildings on this section of East Broadway. Most of them, as rowhouses are, are attached. The renovation is to convert it into a bi-family dwelling. This is within the South Boston I-Pod, it's further within Article 68. It's in an MFRLS multi-family residential local service district. There is South Boston I-Pod applicability. There is a citation for roof structure restrictions. There will be a proposed 12-by-12 roof deck for Unit 5, the top-floor unit's use only. Access to that deck will be through a hatch, a sliding hatch, I believe it is. There's violations cited for insufficient off-street parking. The rear of the building, as I said, on the Emerson Street side, rear of the lot is currently a grade, and there is some space back there for parking. What my clients are proposing are the addition of essentially two tandem slots accessed from Emerson Street for a total of four parking spaces, so two spaces in tandem formation for a total of four. The floor area ratio is excessive. Maximum here, since this is an MFRLS and not an MFR, is 1.5 rather than 2. The proposed MFR here is 3.83. There's a citation for building height. The building is four feet on the, on the Broadway side. If you look at the elevation, the Broadway elevation, the south elevation on Page A, 2.1, it's actually 39 feet eight inches. Because of the grade change, as the site slopes down, Emerson Street is higher on the Emerson Street side, but was building height, can only be measured from the front of the building, the adverse side of the building. It is only refused a letter nonetheless. There's an insufficient front yard setback citation, which, again, this is?
That's existing, right?
Yeah, it's, it's an existing model on the block.
Yeah.
And it's a side yard inefficiency. Again, it's, this is a building that is connected on both sides. You know, the, the bit of addition in the back above the first floor level essentially completes the existing setbacks of the building, which will become non-performing as, as to the, as to the rear addition. The result of this, again, would be five units. The units would be, you know, one, 966 square feet, two, 966 square feet. The units would be, you know, one, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet, two-bedroom. Unit two, eight-hundred-and-fifty-one square feet, two-bedroom. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-one square feet, again, for Unit Three, a two-bedroom. Unit four, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three square foot, two-bedroom. Unit five, a two-level, sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-one square foot, also a two-bedroom. And that can be seen, again, on sheet A one-point-one, where you see the units in the rear can be accessed, are accessed, from Emerson Street. So on the first level of Unit Five, there's a master bedroom, master suite, then goes up to living space and another bedroom on the fourth floor, and then that twelve-foot-by-fifteen-foot roof deck that I mentioned earlier.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate. I do have a question. Counselor, A two-point-four. In fact, shows a head house.
Yeah, it does. I'm sorry. You know, I saw on, I didn't go all the way back, and I saw it looked to be an outline of a hatch, and I think, I'm not sure if the head house is existing.
It appears to be a head house.
Well, it's, yeah, it's our four-story building with an occupied roof, Commander, where the building code conflicts with the zoning code.
Right. This is in South Boston on Broadway.
It is the head house, I think, is centrally located on the building. I do not believe it's visible. It's sloped, so it's the minimal head house that could be used to achieve access to the roof.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Faceh Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My colleague John Allison did the community process on this. We are going on record in opposition based on density. The neighbors felt that the lot is too small, and they are concerned about density in the space, and purely based on complete lack of support from the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. There is a lack of parking in the proposal. The community association, Gate of Heaven, would like to see more parking being provided to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, behalf of the Council, Michael Flaherty. Due to the efforts that went into drafting Article sixty-eight, the council is unable to support the project at this time.
And so, there was opposition?
There's no opposition.
You speak to us before.
There's no opposition in the community.
This is regarding Bernard, correct?
No.
No, 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 no. This is five-eighty East Broadway.
Five-eighty Broadway.
We withdraw our testimony.
So what is your new testimony for five-eighty East Broadway?
The concern related to five-eighty East Broadway is related to a curb cut on Emerson Street, but we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Okay. How about everybody else? On five-eighty East Broadway, still holds from Counselor Flynn's? Okay. So the, so may I have a motion, please, given the revised testimony?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA nine-one-two, one-four-seven, eight-zero-nine, East Broadway. This is a full interior renovation to an existing four-family dwelling. Construct rear decks and egress to the rear of the property. Construct a new roof deck and head house access. Extend living space to the basement for Unit One. Propose four off-street parking at the rear and a private way. The violation is Article twenty-seven-S, section five. This is in the South Boston iPod applicability. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, the roof structure restrictions. Article sixty-eight, section eight, building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Marancy. I'm attorney with business address at three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an application for a renovation of another existing building. This is an existing four-family building at eight-zero-ninety East Broadway, which is located in a multi-family residential sub-district of Article sixty-eight. The blocking question is between M and N Street. What's being proposed is a full renovation of this existing building, construction of rear decks and the new egress system in the rear, extension of living space into the basement for Unit One, but the building's footprint would be the same. The citation for excessive building height was related to the initially proposed roof deck, which would have, the platform of the deck would have penetrated forty feet, which is the maximum building height in the code. My clients have agreed to remove the roof deck during community process. The plans in front of the board reflect a roof without a, without a head house, I'm sorry, not a roof deck. There would be a roof deck, a twelve-by-twelve. My understanding is that there are still concerns on the part of abutters with the rear decks and the roof deck. As I said, the head house has been removed. Access to the rear deck would be from spiral staircase from the third-floor deck coming up in the rear. The, I'll go over the units before I talk a little bit more about the zoning. Unit One would be a twelve-hundred-and-fifty square foot, one-bedroom, the bi-level unit with space in the basement. Unit Two would be seven-hundred-feet, two bedrooms. Unit Three, seven-hundred-and-fifty-feet, two bedrooms. Unit Four, eight-hundred-and-twenty feet, two bedrooms. South Boston iPod applicability has been cited, roof structure restrictions. As I say, the head house has been removed. There would be a twelve-by-twelve foot roof deck on top. The building height citation owes solely to the platform of the deck, as the building is already at the maximum height under zoning. Once you add a roof deck, you incur a building height violation. There's an insufficient usable open space violation. There are two tandem spaces, a total of four spaces, being proposed in the back, which now is the rear yard area, that creates the usable open space violation. It is an attempt to provide some off-street parking for the building. There's a private way that runs essentially the length of the lot, lot in the rear. All the buildings on East Broadway have the right to use that. It's been used as a driveway for rear yard parking for most of these buildings. Again, there would be four parking spaces there in tandem configuration, so there would be two parking slots, eight-and-a-half feet by forty feet, six feet in between. It would be essentially like having tandem parking in a garage. It would only work if the people who park in the spaces coordinate who gets the front space, who gets the rear space.
Chris, you should speak about that first unit, Unit One.
Yes.
What's the intended use of that basement space? It appears to have no windows.
The...
Unless I'm reading it incorrectly.
No, if we, I believe, sheet...
A one-point-one?
Yep, A one-point-one. It is, it's not a bedroom space. It's essentially, it's a living room, as it's shown there. And then going up to the second floor is, I'm sorry, that's living space. I guess it would be sort of a family room, or a game room, or an office. And then on the first floor is where the living, dining, bathroom, and bedroom.
Counselor, I do have a question, and that is, the original drawings submitted to ISD had a head house.
Had a head house.
Therefore, no violation. The, as a result of community meetings, you've taken off the head house. Does that create a violation?
No, because it's not a hatch access. It's a spiral access from the proposed rear egress system, the rear stairs. I had this conversation. I have seen matters before this board, and I think I've had some recently, when there has been spiral access of a rear deck to an occupied four-story building, when I have not seen that cited as a violation. You're talking about whether it was a building code violation?
Yes, yes. Well, whether or not ISD did not cite it as a building code violation, because the original drawings submitted to them include the head house.
Correct.
Now, with the removal of the head house, is this project subject to ISD citing it as a violation?
Again, I have seen ISD not cite spiral access for an occupied four-story building for the deck. I've seen them not cite that as a building code violation. If this in fact goes back to ISD, and they say that the spiral staircase access to the fourth-floor deck doesn't work, my clients would have to, A, remove the roof deck, or have to, if they wanted a head house, come back to this board for another hearing, or apply for a variance from the AAB. So that's a decision that they made to do that. They would remove the head house because they wanted to remove the head house. And then the consequences are that the roof deck may no longer be able to remain, or there may need to be a variance from the AAB for access.
But how would that even be considered to be directed?
Well, again, I'm not certain it's a violation. I am not certain it's a violation, because the stair's not coming from the interior of the building. Not a building code expert. As I said, I have seen cases where this is not cited, and I do know that if the access to an occupied fourth-floor roof is coming from an interior staircase, it must discharge into a head house.
Does the existing building have the head house? No.
No. And it doesn't have a roof deck.
Right, right.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
This is the correct testimony, I promise. My name is Faceh Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support during the community process. The main things that people had concerns about were drainage issues related to the lot, which isn't really a zoning concern here, so we would like to go on record in...
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam of the Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this project. There is many concerns on the roof deck, the rear decks, and also there are concerns on the parking, whether four spots would actually fit on the lot. The City Point Neighborhood Association is also opposed to this project at the moment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the Council, Michael Flaherty. In addition to our ongoing Article sixty-eight concerns, the council would like to echo the sentiments of Counselor Flynn's office and stand with the neighbors in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor Savi Georgia's office. We want to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alison McDonald. Excuse me, eight-zero-seven, East Broadway. I'm a direct abutter to the building. During the community process, I wasn't served with any papers that they were having a meeting, and several of my neighbors weren't as well. And we've requested to the developers to have additional meetings, and they declined to defer this hearing. We're happy to hear about the head house being removed, but the decks off of the back, when we had an informal community meeting with the developers, they said they would be small balconies, and the latest plans look like they don't intend to be small balconies. The other major issue for deferring this and opposing this is the four parking spaces. There is not enough room, and you have letters from my neighbors. There's a letter from Mr. McNally, who spells out clearly how there's not enough room for four parking spaces behind this building. So we oppose that today. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Robert Morris. I'm a long-term resident of eight-one-one, East Broadway, which is a direct abutter. My family's been in this house for over a hundred-and-ten years, over the hundred-and-sixty or so years these houses have existed, and we've tried to maintain the architectural integrity to the best of our abilities at all times. This proposal is going to damage my quality of life and other people's quality of life. I object to the proposal as is, based on the four parking spots. I don't think it's possible. Mr. McNally has given you a very well-documented letter, and I agree with that, and I think it should be reduced to two parking spots. I object to the decks on the back, and we've been kind of fooled, if you will, by the use of words. So in our initial abutters meeting, very first meeting that took place in my house, we were told there'd be small balconies. I recorded in my notes balconies, and my friend here, Alison, recorded as small balconies. There's quite a big difference between small balconies and decks.
Whether it's decks or balconies, what was the, what was the dimension that you were under the impression, was it six feet?
Small, small.
Well, you know, small can be two-by-two.
Up until today, we cannot determine it, but we think it is ten-point-six deep and thirteen wide. Now, when we say ten-point-six deep, I've sent you some pictures there of a balcony, or a deck, I'm going to call it a deck, that's six-point-six feet deep. They want a deck that is a good, almost seventy percent bigger out the back.
Okay, thank you.
And that can, that can just destroy the community, because it'll just be a potty deck. Four of them, they want four, not one, four. Architecturally, it's very bad. It's dangerous for the welfare of the community. I looked outside here, and some people were standing a little area out here, fifteen people or half of the deck.
So, listen, so I understand your concern is architectural integrity, parking, the size of the rear decks. Is there anything else?
No, the rear decks are grossly overdesigned.
Okay, so we get it.
And so I object to it on that, on those two parts.
On those two, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marancy?
Again, as I indicated, I was aware that there was concern about the rear decks. Again, they're about twelve-by-twelve. The stairway system is an egress system. The roof deck is also about twelve-by-twelve. Adding the parking in the rear removed usable open space. The effort here was to provide some amount of usable open space for each dwelling unit. In terms of the parking, I guess what we're hearing is people want there to be less parking, which is kind of the opposite of what we usually hear. They're proposing two tandem spaces so that four cars could park there. I'll leave that to the board if they believe that there should be less parking for the four units.
So the decks are also doing double duty as egress?
That is, that is, that is an egress system, yes.
That is an egress system.
And the decks are about twelve, about twelve-by-twelve.
Twelve-by-twelve.
Right, but the egress only means three feet.
No, they're recreational. They're absolutely, they're to provide some usable open space, but I don't think they're grossly out of character with what we see as, you know, usable open space decks for buildings like this in the city.
Given that information...
Does the parking work?
Bob, the parking works? May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve with, with design review. They give special attention to the decks and to the parking. One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA nine-one-eight, four-five-eight, eight-thirty-two, East Third Street. This is construct a new second-floor addition above the second, the existing first-floor footprint to an existing single-family dwelling and a full renovation. Violation is Article twenty-seven-S, section five. This is in the South Boston iPod. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Patrick Pomoni for the business address of one-sixty Federal Street. To my right is Architect Steve Egan, embark at sixty-K Street, and to his right is Ed Harry, the owner of the property, at sixty-Pinson Road. The proposal today, Madam Chair, members of the Board...
Thank you.
...is an extension of an existing single-family home. This project started the community process before the iPod took effect and right before the permit issued for six units. The iPod refusal letter was sent out to my client and myself. And since then, after much community process, the proposal has been drastically reduced to expand the existing single-family home and incurring only a side yard violation. And the reason for that is the existing right side of the single-family home is two-and-a-half feet from the right side yard, and to go up vertically one story, as it now proposed, would incur that six-inch side yard violation. The inter-planted mobile aid district also applies to confirm compliance that it is within Article sixty-eight, with the exception of that side yard, because it's more than a thousand square feet being renovated in total. The FAR for this area is two, we're substantially below that, somewhere a point-seven.
And this is definitely a single-family?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And where's the parking?
Parking is on the right side. It's an existing, it's an existing building. It's a tandem parking configuration. No parking, no additional parking would be required.
Okay.
Is the existing parking, in fact, front yard? Is the existing parking, in fact, front yard?
It's not. It's between the side yard. The tandem space would be in the front yard, but it's in existing condition.
How far back does the driveway go?
I think it's 19 feet is the front yard setback of the existing structure. So to the right of that, half of the car would stick in. Currently does stick in from the front yard.
The front yard is 20 feet. How are the plans, Mr. Maransy?
Draws are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The Council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before I call the next case, I'm going to call the 1130s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Address, Council? Address, please.
139 Walter Street, Rosendale, Mass. 02131.
For the record, calling BOA 765-159-139, Walter Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Lickflower, 50 Congress Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman of the Board. We are requesting a deferral to April 9th, which is a date that the board staff has already scheduled.
Okay, before we go any further, tell us why you need another deferral on this?
Yes, I will. When we were last in front of the board, the board noticed a procedural glitch in that our amended plans had not gone through ISD. That was on February 26th, and gave us this hearing date today, March 13th. In the interim, we did get the amended plans through ISD, and on March 6th, ISD issued a new refusal letter. In the refusal letter, ISD eliminated several violations, but found two new violations. And the board staff, including board's council, determined that the two new violations would have to be advertised. In fact, I believe it's a jurisdictional problem. So in order to get around that, they scheduled, gave us an April 9th date.
So April 9th would be after the advertising?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
There's a request for a deferral.
We have it in.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the date is April?
You do have a date of April 9th at 11:30.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals? Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor, address, please.
46 Sheridan Street.
For the record, calling BOA 872-019-46, Sheridan Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Matthew Exum, Drago Piscano with the business address of 15 Broad Street. At this time, we're seeking a withdrawal of this appeal.
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor, address, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board. This is 1923 Clap Street from the 930 list. It's BOA 824-773. I apologize for not deferring earlier, but I think that...
Hold on a second, Counselor.
Clap Street.
So you're going to defer?
We've requested deferral at this time.
So we're going to call it in for the record, calling BOA 824-773, 19 to 23 Clap Street. Name and address for the record.
James Rudser, on behalf of 19 to 23 Clap Street LLC.
And this is a request for a deferral?
It is, at this time.
Is it still in community process?
We have presented to two different community groups and reached two different conclusions with respect to support for those groups. We'd like a short deferral so that we could try to reconcile the concerns of both.
Counselor, just so you know, we're into July.
Is the July 9th date free?
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date is July?
July 9th at 11:30.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board.
Well, Madam Chair, just to do, I'm going to do discussions one more time, rediscussions. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 1130s? Just for our own, we are deferring case BOA 787-634, 500 to 502 East Broadway, is being deferred to March 26th at 11:30.
This was for 1130s?
This is for 1130 rediscussions. Case BOA 787-634, 500 to 502 East Broadway is now being deferred to 3/26/2019 at 11:30.
On what basis? Where, is the applicant here? On what, on what basis? Because is this the second or a third deferral?
You'd have to clarify that.
I think it was 15.
Yeah.
I think it's a new refusal letter.
It's a new refusal letter? Okay.
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
3/26 at 11:30. March 26th.
So did that give it enough time to advertise?
It's already been advertised.
It's been advertised. Okay, excellent. Okay?
Madam Chair, we're just going back to 1030s. Case BOA 897-691-571, American Legion Highway, companion case BOA 897-974-602, Canterbury Street. We have a letter from council. They are withdrawing, so we're going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Project has been withdrawn.
Calling a next case for 930. Calling BOA 906-847-202, West Broadway. This is a change of occupancy of a building, four residential units, with garage and four residential units with office space on the ground floor. This is to change garage to office use. Additionally, the applicant seeks to add a private roof deck for the top floor, exclusive with the head house. The violation to Article 27 S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 29, the roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 33, our street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 7, professional office is a conditional use. Article 68, Section 8, the Floyd ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is George Faranso, Attorney General Business Address, 350 West Broadway in South Austin. Madam Chair, Members, this application is quite simple. Issues in existing building with four dwelling units and a ground floor garage inferred upon West Broadway. The building at 202 West Broadway is located on the block between B and C Street. The zoning district is an MFR LS. What my clients seek to do is take the parking garage, which is underutilized, if not in fact unused, and introduce an office use into that space.
So when was this building constructed?
This was one of my projects. I suspect it was made eight or nine years ago.
And so that came in for variances?
Correct.
It came in for variances? It came in with a proposal for four parking spaces?
That's correct.
And now it's a request to change it?
Yes. My clients who, my original clients still own the building. It's a rental building. It's located about a block and a half from Broadway Station, and they are finding that their tenants are not using the garage. This is an area of West Broadway where there are a lot of retail uses, there and bar and restaurant uses. There is a need. My clients have been approached for use of the space as an office use. They went through a community process. The St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is supportive of it. And again, the use that they did here is to eliminate a garage door on Broadway, four parking spaces that are not being used historically by the renters in the building, and activating the use with a small office space. The office space is oddly enough a conditional use, even though this is a multifamily residential local service district.
Mr. Maransy, you know, I have an issue with that. You know, project comes before this board for relief. You know, we approve it, you know, and then it comes in again, because this building, you know, has a lifetime beyond us, we hope.
And I understand.
You know, it may not be used today, but, you know, it does need a need, possibly for the residents of the building.
I understand the board's concerns, and I think that if this were matted or in a year or two or three years ago, and if it were a different owner. This is the same owners who have held it for this amount of time, who are seeing that the parking spaces, the parking garage is going unused consistently over the years. I think that if this building were coming in today, there's a different environment. I think that this would be proposed as four-unit or building with ground floor commercial space and no parking, no garage door on West Broadway. Again, it's located about a three-minute walk from Broadway Red Line. So I think that, again, if we're coming in with this as a new building, I do not think we'd be proposing parking. And I think that the fact that a better use for this space is, you know, as an office space, is evident by, I think what you will hear is that there's community support, including the local civic association, to provide the office space rather, again, than parking that's not being used. I understand the board's concerns for future use, but as I said, I think if we're coming in here under a new proposal, there wouldn't be parking proposed in this building.
I'm actually encouraged, in a sense, by this, because it does give historical justification to, in fact, eliminating parking. And we have the opportunity here, in fact, to put back, get rid of the curb cut, and increase the use of that space for the public good, rather than having taken away.
Which I think is particularly important in the context of West Broadway.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think we probably made an error in allowing...
And how are the plans?
The plans are adequate for filling in this space.
Any questions from the board?
I'm just confused, because in the notice, it talks about roof deck.
Oh, roof deck, yeah, I forgot. That's, I kind of buried the lead. So my clients, through community process, agreed that there'd be no roof deck. You should know better.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this, specifically because they've also agreed to take off the roof deck. Pardon's proposal.
My Chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The Council would like to go on record in support. As mentioned, there were concerns on the abutters meetings on the roof deck, which has been removed. At this point, there is none of concerns. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. We want to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, yes, Councilor Ash Michael Flaherty. Due to the fact that we're into drafting Article 68, the council unable to support the product at this time, but we'll leave it to the board's discretion.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a relief request with supervisons. Number one, there is to be no roof deck. Number two, the curb cut is to be removed and the curb replaced, curb and sidewalk replaced.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the record, I'll put my name and opposition.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for 930. Calling BOA 907-797, 744 to 748 Dudley Street. This is a change of occupancy to include a takeout, 36A, to an existing restaurant, and no work to be done. The violation to Article 65, Section 15, takeout restaurant is conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
744, Level 3.
What's your name, please?
My name is Daniel Surian. 128 Cambridge Street, Charlestown.
Will you be speaking? So tell us what's being proposed.
This is a small takeout restaurant. It used to be a seafood place.
What's the name of the restaurant?
Picalonga.
Picalonga, okay.
It's a Dominican-style type of food.
Okay. And it's an existing restaurant, and you want to add takeout?
That is correct.
Have you had any experience with takeout in other places?
I have Boston House of Pizza for seven years.
Pardon?
Boston House of Pizza, seven years.
Where is that?
306, 303 Huntington Avenue, across from Northeastern University. Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Maransy?
Draws are adequate.
Does it have grates on the front of the building?
No, it doesn't.
No grates? Okay.
And the seating capacity, you only have four seats in that?
That is correct.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the change.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
I have a question. What was the name of the restaurant before?
No, before that, it was... That was it.
And it doesn't have any grates? Is it right?
It looks like it has grates in front of it.
Do you not have pull-down grates?
Yeah.
You do?
We do.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review and special attention to the grates.
Are you telling me to remove the grates?
Yes.
Correct.
And I'm also saying that we want to have the regular takeout language in there.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So you're all set? We're going to take a 10-minute break, and we will re-do it by 12:10.
That's all. All right?
I know. Board of Appeal is back in session. This is for Tuesday, March 12th. Just a reminder, please make sure your phones are off. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you need to have conversations, please take them outside of the room. It is difficult for us to hear people at the table if there are echoes in the back of the room. And remember that when you're here to speak, either in support or in opposition, put your name and address on the record and give us new information. Please do not repeat what a previous speaker has already stated. We want to hear more information. Okay? Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30 before I call the first case? Calling the first case, BOA 910-427, 3231 Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy from two to four units and renovation of an existing triple-decker, including kitchen, bath, relocate building systems, sprinkler paint, and replace exterior siding. The violation is Article 55, Section 40. No off-street parking is proposed. Article 55, Section 8. The MFR is forbidden in a 3F/4,000 sub-district. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot areas insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 53, Section 9.3, dimensional regulations, location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. With me to my right is the owner of the building, Matt Javich.
Thank you.
This is a proposal to change the occupancy of an existing two-family to a four-family by essentially legalizing the existing third unit on the top floor, extending living space into the basement, and thereafter splitting the basement and the ground floor into two duplex units, so that the basement won't be a single unit, rather, the ground floor and the basement will be split to create two duplex units. And then the second floor and the third floor will each have one unit on each of those floors. The bedroom count is there are two two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units. The unit sizes average about 1,200 square feet each. The zoning violations are insufficient off-street parking. There is an existing curb cut in a driveway on the right-hand side of the existing structure, but it's very narrow and steep, so it's inadequate for parking in its present condition. And there's a desire on the part of the owner of the building to preserve that as usable open space in the rear yard. It's a nice rear yard area. Second is the use violation. This is a 3F sub-district. The proposal is to add a fourth unit, which makes it multifamily residential. The lot area is insufficient, although it's important to point out that as part of this proposal, no change to the footprint of the building, no additions, no expansions.
Lot area for the additional dwelling units, so there are additional dwelling units.
Right. So we're adding the additional dwelling unit by extending the living space. Yes.
Yep.
Floor area ratio of the existing is 1.2, proposed is 1.6. And lastly, there is a design issue which relates to entrance to one of the dwelling units. The duplex, which is at the rear of the building, on the ground floor and the basement, the entrance to that unit is at the rear lower level, but because of the slope of the land, it's a full walkout basement in the rear. There's an existing porch and entry, and that will serve as the entry to the dwelling unit. So one of the four dwelling units will not have an entrance on the front lot. All the other three units have, there's two doors on the front porch. One leads to the front, and the second door leads to the upper two units. And those are the zoning issues.
So what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the attic on the third floor?
That was actually, Madam Chair, the subject of much discussion during our community review. And we went back to JPNC zoning committee with further testimony from the architect that the ceiling height was adequate, and there are two skylights, not shown on the plan, but two existing skylights that provide light and air on the top floor unit as well.
So what was it adequate with the... Simple question, what's the height?
Yep. Well, for starters, there is no citation in any of the, in the refusal letter for ceiling height.
Just give us facts, please. What's the height at the peak and what's the height at the knee walls?
I'm not able to determine that from the floor plans.
Well, I'm going to determine it for you from the section, from the end elevation, sir. And my concern is, having done this, that there's a dotted line on the end elevation, which normal convention would say that that is the floor. And there's a note to the left of it that says that it is the floor left. Okay? And I'm using a scale, and if I deduct out the five-foot knee walls on that side, that gives a width of the upper floor of just under 12 feet. And then the peak goes up, assuming that they're colocized, not running across. I would say that you have a legitimate height in the attic of 7'6", which is fine. The problem with it is where the five-foot knee walls intrude, you have to exclude that area out of the area of the unit.
But there is a bathroom, laundry proposed in that five-foot knee wall, in that five-foot knee wall space.
Yeah, and there aren't any dormers.
Yeah. And it's also counting that space as living and dining room and part of a bedroom.
What did he list for the area of that unit up top?
The unit on the top floor has a square foot area of 1,165.
There's no way that's 1,165. So, okay, so let's say it's half that. So that gives you 555.
600-ish.
So 600, okay. So it is possible to have a unit up there on the order of 600 square feet. And I would advise any condo buyers to be very wary of that 1,100 square foot number.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Sure.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Pop Webster here from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. We would also like to go on record in support. There was a lively discussion of this at the neighborhood council, and the conclusion was that additional housing is important in this area, especially if it doesn't increase the envelope of the building. So there was support, even though the units are somewhat small. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council adjutant Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Pizzani, how can we put in a proviso about that, the knee wall space?
Well, the issue here is that...
Because, I mean, that's really, for most intents and purposes, unusable.
Right. Which means that you can't count it as livable space, but it can be usable, because it could be storage space, it could be a lot, a lot of things. And I think the issue really is for any future buyer to be fully cognizant of what they're actually getting in terms of area and the price adjusted to that regard based on how they're facing. The other thing, of course, is that, is this building sprinkled now?
It is not, but it will be.
And you've been collecting rents on four units?
Three.
Three units.
Okay. So it still puts it at the multifamily.
Yeah.
May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested with a proviso that no building code relief be granted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 914-494, 10 to 12 Sagamore Street. This is a curb cut, a grading of property, and paving an area for accommodate two vehicles. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. The building is an existing three-family in a two-family sub-district. Article 10, Section 1. Proposed parking is within five feet of the side lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Shenna, 14A Dawes Street, Blackstone, Massachusetts.
Darren Swain, 22 Gannett-Pasture Lane, situat.
Can you tell us what's being proposed?
Madam Chair, in the...
Madam Chair, and the board, we are proposing a curb cut to access two off-street parking spaces at 1012 Sagamo Street, in which we are the managers of the LLC which own it. It will currently remove one vehicle from the, from the street parking. And really, the largest, thank you, the largest violation is that why we're here is because the building sits in a two-family sub-district, and it is an existing three-family.
So the question is, is there a change of grade between the sidewalk and the rear proposed parking space?
There is. There is a change of grade, and we had hired a professional landscape contractor to come in and excavate out and properly put a timber, a landscaped timber.
Has it been done?
It has been done, yes.
Yeah, pardon?
Do you have a question? The backup use of the actual space was just going to be used as common area for the units that we did renovate.
When was the work done?
Work was recently completed. Actually, the certificate of occupancy has not, has not been issued yet. We're waiting on life and safety walkthroughs, but the work, for the most part, is generally complete.
So what's the grade change between the street and the rear? Is that two feet?
About that, about that, yes.
Oh, okay, it's not...
Oh, it's not severe?
It's not severe.
Correct.
Okay.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drive your head.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was an abutters meeting held on January 23rd for this project proposal. We'd like to go on record in support of it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
To approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 922-089, 430 to 454 Blue Hill Avenue. This is a retail build-out for a cannabis dispensary, including electrical and plumbing work. Violation is Article 50, Section 19. Cannabis establishment is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I am going to reduce myself.
Thanks, Bruce.
Koby Evans, 58 Bartlett Street, Roxbury, Mass.
Kevin Hart, 16 Jane Street, Randolph, Massachusetts.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we are proposing a use of, change of use of occupancy for a retail cannabis operation.
Okay, how many square feet are you...
3,000.
1,000 square feet?
3,000.
I'm sorry, 3,000 square feet. So tell us, just like we had one case on earlier today?
Correct.
Tell us again how this business will operate.
Sure. Our plan is to operate a high-functioning, well-managed dispensary that provides opportunity employments, employment opportunities for community members. Peer oasis will provide jobs, jobs training, coaching, and mentorship to ensure residents become more aware of how to improve their economic status. We are before you today seeking a conditional use approval. So most of our operation guidelines are dictated by the Campus Control Commission, so there's...
So tell me with your storefront?
Our storefront.
If your storefront, yeah, if I walk in the door?
Sure.
How will, will, will I be processed?
So first off, you would walk in the door, and there would be a reception area. So just to come in the door, you'd have to show an ID. Then you would advance onto the reception area, where you would have to present that ID again. We would have reception staff there that would take your ID, enter you...
Excuse me, do you have a plan that actually shows that? Because the plans that you presented do not show anything like that.
No, at this point, we were looking at a conditional use, so I expected that our plan was, we're going to advance to the next step if we got that far, so what we have...
But we need to understand the operations, so he needs revised plans that will show exactly, because, you know, one of the things we need to know about is, is there going to be a line down the street?
No.
How are you going to do the double checks?
Yeah.
In-house, you know, just things like that.
Yeah, exactly. So no, again, we have, we have 3,000 square feet. 1,600 of that square feet is just dedicated to making sure that there is no line on the street. We have expanded the footprint just to make sure that, again, people would be inside, there will be no visible activity from the street. Everyone who comes to our dispensary will be in our building, in our reception area, being checked in, waiting patiently before they are even allowed into the dispensary.
Will their IDs be scanned or is it...
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, our guidelines, operational guidelines are mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission, so we can't even become operational until they have the final approval and give us the okay to move forward.
What's the population that you'd be serving per day?
Looking at roughly statistically, somewhere between 300 to 350 people a day.
300 people a day?
Correct.
How many hours are you opening?
Nine hours.
Nine hours.
Your hours of operation?
11...
11 a.m. to 8 p.m.
11 a.m. to 8 p.m.?
Correct.
And Sunday hours?
I believe, based on the hosting agreement, that's the same throughout the week.
All week, okay.
And how many people will be working inside?
12.
So 12, 12 staff?
Correct. We're looking at hiring 24 full-time employees.
Okay, and tell us how the interior is set up. Will there be product that people look at, or will there be iPads? How is that supposed to look?
We want to have as minimal exposure as possible, so you'll just have a sample dish that is encaps, that the product is encapsulated in, and so you'll be able to look at the sample. We expect that most of our customers will be well-versed in the industry and know what they want, so they'll pretty much be ordering off of a screen or the example, and then the order goes back into our fulfillment area, and then they put it together, put it in a secure childproof bag, deliver it to the salesperson, the salesperson hands off to the customer, and then the order is double-checked along with the ID on their way out.
Will you have a web presence so people can shop online and...
Well, I mean, it's...
So it reduces their in-store time?
Well, so what we want to do is to have a forward-facing team on the floor so that when the customer comes, they're greeted by a budtender. The budtender talks to the customer, figures out what exactly they want to buy to expedite the process, and then they purchase on their way out once the decision has been made. But again, in this industry, you, in this industry, in this location, you generally don't get tourist kind of buyers. You get buyers that know what they want before they show up, and then sometimes you can work with apps like Leafly, and through the Leafly website, then a customer can see what your inventory looks like before they come to the store.
When you said they use a screen, is there like a kiosk or something or...
Not necessarily. All it is, is a menu, is if, it's an LCD screen like in McDonald's that says, okay, this is the product we have, it's tied to our inventory database, so as that product goes out of stock, it's removed from the display. So within the waiting areas, people are waiting to get checked in, we have an LCD screen that says, this is what product we have. So again, in the time that they're waiting, they can already start pre-ordering or mentally pre-ordering.
Are you packaging it there or is it already prepackaged?
Yes, we are packaging, yes. In this, right now, the wholesalers that we have talked to said, right now, they're just delivering raw product. In the future, they will give you what's called white-label packaged product, but right now, it's just bulk.
So your 12 employees will handle the shipping and receiving, packaging, and handling the people on the floor?
Well, again, you, so you do some of the work before you even open for business, you know, so in every hour of the day, you aren't as busy as peak hours, so you, just like a restaurant, a restaurant has employees that come in before the restaurant is open, and they do prep work. So it's the same concept of doing prep work in downtime and slow times.
So how do you protect your product? Do you have a vault or...
Redundancies, security on the exterior of the building, we have redundancies on the inside, we have, again, our security protocols are mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission. So without getting into too much detail, we have storage rooms, we have vaults, live monitoring, so I could be, we could be anywhere in the world and monitor the store remotely. Again, we lean on seasoned professionals to kind of come up with those plans, so we've had consultants that have come through and given us direction in terms of, you know, the best protocols for employing these situations.
Is there a physical separation between where the product is received and packaged and the retail?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Again, key card access. We really want to maintain the security of, the integrity of the security protocols, but at the same time, giving customers a feel of not being, like, you'll have security, but they're not security guards. You want people to have a good customer experience so that they're not feeling as if they're, you know, in an overprotective environment. So yes, there are barriers and duplicate barriers.
I have a couple of questions. You stated that the area is 3,000 square feet.
Correct.
The building is 40 by 40. Okay, that's 1,600 square feet. Where is the other square footage?
So there's...
The plan that you had to show here is 40 by 40.
Correct.
So where is the other square footage?
The other square footage is in the space next door, which we're expanding into. That's the base footprint?
Yeah, you know, I'm concerned about something. And you're not the first group that's been before this board.
Sure.
But you are the first group with absolutely insufficient drawings.
Okay.
I mean, it's not possible. Your words are very articulate, and you clearly have an understanding of what you're doing, but there is no demonstration of that in terms of the documents. And it gets to the point of, if you're processing 300 people a day?
Yes.
And the issue of security becomes a very real issue, and it requires, space requires indication of where areas ought to be or not to be. Areas of production are of great concern, and I just want to say, Madam Chair, this would benefit from a deferral.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we bring it back the same day? Will you be ready in two weeks?
Absolutely.
So look at the tape of the other group that...
Yeah.
...approved, and I think there's one more on the agenda for today. See what they're interested in?
Yeah.
Because it's the security. If you have a security consultant, it might help to have them here, you know, and really show us through the layout how things are going to work.
Sure. So it'll be March 26th, 11:30.
So March 26th, 11:30.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 913-728, 1510 to 1514 Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from a convenience store to a hair salon. Violation is Article 65, Section 15. A hair salon is a conditional use on the first story. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, how are you? So the name is Long, please, and the address is 1512 Dorchester F.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing to do.
The proposal is before is the completing store, and now we want to change to hair salons.
A hair salon, and how many seats will you have?
Four seats.
Four, and what are your hours of operation?
Our operation from, from 9 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drive your head.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Qua Pham from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant did receive support from the local civic group, and also they are occupying a vacant spot in the Main Street District Infused Corner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Does the front of the building have any grates on it, the pull-down grates?
No.
No, okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve with, I'll just make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 916-199, 26 Erickson Street. You're all set.
Thank you.
This is a change of occupancy from wood, you're good, occupancy from woodworking to used restaurant with function hall, light manufacturing, increasing occupancy in an existing restaurant lounge from 49 persons to 120 per, 121, 120 persons, and install a fire alarm system. Violation is Article 65, Section 18. Restaurant with a function hall is conditional. Article 65, Section 18. Light manufacturing winery is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Vito Bruno, 26 Erickson Street.
Ralph Bruno, 26 Erickson Street.
Tell us, tell us about what you're proposing.
So I'd like to clarify, the, in the early 2000s, our grandfather purchased the property after subsequently purchasing Venezia Restaurant, which is 20 Erickson, located right across the parking lot. There was a co-founder in the winery. The winery is, is open right now, currently operating. He was the director of business. He came before the board in 2005, was approved here, however, due to clerical issues, never went through and finalized the application process. This came to light when I filed for a new liquor license, and the permit, to renew the permit, the ISD certification was required. We had the building department come out, do the inspection, later found out that the occupancy...
Was still under, was still used as a woodworking shop.
They had lumped our jacket in with the restaurant next door being the same family business, so this is an attempt for us to rectify that and change our occupancy to be, to be our proper occupancy.
Okay, so now we understand that background.
Okay.
Tell us how this is all going to work together.
So we function separately, obviously, from the restaurant. We do tastings, we have private functions.
Because this is restaurant with function hall.
So the verbiage there, I'm not sure if that's the correct verbiage, but all we want is just to, just for it to be a function room.
We did speak with...
And what's the capacity of that function room?
120.
120?
Yeah.
And it's going to be a function room? What does a function room mean?
So we just, you know, host bridal showers, you know, weddings?
It's not a regular restaurant.
No, no.
It's special events.
Yeah, and we did have our civic association meeting, and this did come up. We were unclear whether it was the vernacular that restaurant and function room was tied in together with the building department. I did write a letter to the civic association head saying that we have no intentions on running a restaurant, which is the truth of the matter. We cater all of our food over from our family restaurant, so we'd be in direct competition over family regardless, so no intentions on opening a restaurant.
Okay.
No sprinkler system? You put in any alarm system?
We have a sprinkler system in there right now. The alarm system is outdated. There is a panel that's under, there's a little basement there where our water and service, you know, our sprinkler system comes through, and our panel is under there, so we have to move our panel over by the front door.
How long ago is you system working out?
This was, it was vacant for decades.
It was a shipyard back in the 40s, 50s, lowly shipyard.
So I have another question. I've been in the facility, it's very nice. So the permit that you guys thought you had was for how many people? So the permit five years ago, they had a problem.
So that was for 120.
I believe it was for 120.
So how are we going from 49 to 120 is what I'm trying to figure out?
We had a temporary permit that had been put in place once we had, you know, once the issue had arisen, they're like, all right, here's a temporary occupancy for 49.
So we got the temporary permit. The fire chief came in, the head of the building department came in, they made sure everything was okay to approve the temporary. Obviously, they asked us that we go through the formal process. I would like to point out, too, a separate short form was filed by Joe Consavo, he's our union contractor. When the work was actually done for the build-out of the winery, he was part of the process as well. He was hoping to be here today, but he had other obligations as well.
He was here earlier.
Yeah.
So can you tell us about the winery?
Of course.
Tell us how it works.
So we take our food in mostly from California, some from Italy, some from Chile, South Africa, and we just do everything from crushing to bottling right there.
I'm assuming you'd like to know more about the operations as far as with the public. We do our tastings on a reservation system, so we do have a couple different system checks for the amount of people that come in. Everything is by reservations. We operate our tastings from noon to 5:00, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is 1:00 to 6:00. We operate our tastings from noon to 5:00, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is 1:00 to 6:00, and then Sunday is noon to 4:00. We do require reservations. We have turned folks away with, if we do not have adequate space. So if we have private events, we close out our tastings.
Distribution.
So we have some small distribution. We use a family-operated business out of Weymouth, Mascherelli Company, and then another business out of the western part of the state with, it's a smaller distribution company called Abacus Distributing.
Okay. So in other words, how many trucks are we, is this going to?
We maybe get one a week.
It's going to be on the streets, one a week.
Yeah, we don't actually have any of our own. We don't do any self-distribution, it's just not a business, you know, we're not in the business competing with Gallo on the forefront. We'll leave that to the professionals.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a Butters meeting held on February 5th, and the applicant subsequently met with Port Norfolk Neighborhood Association. I've been working with them both formally and informally to come to a reasonable solution to some of their concerns. They're a longstanding community partner in Port Norfolk, and we'd be happy to go on the record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan.
On behalf of the Councilor, Michael Flaherty. Counselor to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor at Ibi Georgi's office. We'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 914-298-102-Naponton Avenue. This erect a new multifamily dwelling, six residential units, propose six off-street parking. The violation is Article 10, Section 1. Off-street parking shall be located more than five feet from the side lot line. Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard. Article 65, Section 8. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden use. Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. A building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9.2. Within the residential sub-district, the main entrance of the dwelling shall face the front lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me is Bill DeCanzio, who is the architect for this project, together with Warren O'Reilly, who's the owner, developer of this project.
Please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Sure. The proposal is to construct six condominiums on this lot. It's currently a vacant lot. The lot size is 7,510 square feet. The unit sizes, they're all two-bedroom, two-bath units. They range in size from 917 square feet to 984 square feet. And additionally, we're providing eight off-street parking spaces. To Mr. Fortune's point, through the community process, there are a number of violations have been lifted, which is compliant with zoning. The violations, if I may-
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Instead of vacant lot, the notice has demolished the existing single-family. I believe that's already been done.
It's been done.
It's already been done.
So it's now vacant?
I'm sorry, now vacant, yes. It was a DND property.
Okay.
So with respect to the violations, initially, parking was a violation. They had corrected that and became zoning compliant with that. This all happened through the community process. And what that was, is it was parking in the front yard as well. So in addition to increasing the number of parking, they removed the parking from the front of the house. The use, obviously, we have a six-family in a 2F zone, so multifamily residential. Building height, as Mr. Fortune stated, it's three stories. In stories, however, it's only 33 feet in height. And FAR is 0.5 is zoning, and we are at 0.81. So we had a community process. As I stated initially, it was a six-unit building. We decreased the size of the building envelope to eliminate a rear yard violation, which was read out, and that was through the community process. And we had a total of actually three community meetings, including the Pope Hill Civic Association, and all the meetings went very well.
So this, the handicapped unit is the ground floor unit? As you look at the building on the right-hand side?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was- And the applicant subsequently met with the Pope Hill Neighborhood Association two times, meeting many of their concerns. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a-
The BPDA seems to be in opposition.
We were at the time. We didn't see these new plans that had any parking spaces or the elimination of the front yard parking. And now that the building is smaller, we had seen the plans, we may have had a different recommendation.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 921-790-97PAS Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling, and propose one additional off-street parking. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. A three-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article 9, Section 2. Change from a two-family to a three-family. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me is Andrew Ulrich, who is the owner of this property.
What's being proposed?
So, the proposal, Madam Chair, is to change a two-family to a three-family. The lot area is 9,693 square feet. 5,000 is compliant with zoning. FAR in this district is 0.5, we're at 0.31. So basically, we're staying within the building envelope itself, and it, right currently, it's zoned as a two-family, it has a single family with an in-law apartment, and they're changing that to reconfigure the existing structure of the main building and make that two units. The unit size is unit one, and we'll be on the first floor, it's 943 square feet, two-bedroom, two-bath. Unit two is going to be the second and third floor. That's 1,245 square feet. It's two-bedroom, two-bath. And this is owner occupied, they, Andrew actually lives in this building as well.
So, you know, today you've come in with a lot of two-bedrooms. Is there a demand for two-bedrooms? No threes?
I just-
Just out of curiosity, frankly.
You know, I, through the community process, a lot of times you go into neighborhoods and they push back on three-bedrooms, and other neighborhoods prefer to have three-bedrooms. I just think the way this, the main structured building configures, it made more sense to have two bedrooms, because it's currently a four-bedroom unit, a four-bedroom home, so to cut it up and then to just maintain that without building outside the existing footprint.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate. I do have a question for you, and that is, what are the sizes of the units? Could you go over that again, please?
Sure. Unit one is listed at 943 square feet. Unit two is 1,245 square feet, and unit three is approximately 740 square feet. Unit three being the existing in-law apartment in the rear of the building.
So that was an illegal, illegal construction?
It was legal.
It was legal?
It was legal, yeah. So if you look at the violation letter that comes from ISD, it states going from a two to a three. So it was, it's a two, a single with an in-law, but they, for all intents and zoning purposes, they are labeling it as a two-family.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a Butters meeting held on January 29th, and the applicant subsequently met with the Pope Hill Neighborhood Association, receiving their support. I'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of the Councilor, Michael Flaherty. Counselor to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor at Ibi Georgi's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 900-693-20RICH STREET. This is to construct a second-floor addition with roof deck for an existing single-family dwelling and full interior renovation. The violation is Article 60, Section 9. Front yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Ellis Brown, 20 RICH STREET. And I have with me the architect, Roger Solinger.
Tell us what you're proposing.
So I'm proposing to take off a part of my roof and replace it with a different, a different, a top roof and add a porch, as well as do some construction to the inside of my house.
Okay. So, you have, this is a question for your architect. You have three violations, front, side, and rear. These are all existing violations?
Correct.
So it's, it's just staying within the footprint, going up a story?
Correct.
Okay. And tell us about that roof deck?
It's, it's over, I believe, part of the existing living area on the first floor. It's also a part of an existing porch on the first floor.
So it's a second-floor deck?
It's a second floor.
It's a second-floor deck.
It's, it's under the roof of the raised roof.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. And any sense of what the dimensions are?
Yes. Sorry.
In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support? You have the dimensions?
Yes, it's six foot five by 16 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celeston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I've held an Butters presentation for this property through the Madepan-Dorchester Resident Meeting, and we've also had a presentation at the West Selden Association, and they're in strong support of this project. We support. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, Councilman McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record as support.
Excellent. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval of BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 903-904, 231 to 233 West Street. This is adding a shed dormers on the attic and making additional room. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. This is an extension of a non-conforming use is conditional. Article 69, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jay Duker. I reside at 179 Trenton Street, East Boston. I'm here on behalf of the owner, Huey Zinn. The project is a, it's a two-family property in Hyde Park. Mr. Zinn hired a contractor to put on dormers in an existing stairway to the attic. The contractor unfortunately didn't get permits.
Are those, are those photographs for us? Because that helps us understand what's going on.
So, Mr. Zinn was, got some permits to do some renovation work, siding kitchens and baths. He wants to move in there with his family. He's got three children. He's asking this board for relief for something that's already built.
Okay. And what's, how, what's the size of that? What's the size?
The size of the rooms upstairs would be approximately 580 square feet.
580 square feet, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
How, how the photographs? Anybody look at them? In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. A Butters meeting was held back in November with no opposition from the community, and we want to offer our full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Walter Applewhite, Councilman McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record as support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 893-770-4018 to 405 Center Street. This is a change of legal occupancy in school at a retail cannabis establishment. The violation is Article 55, Section 16. Cannabis facility is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney at Prince Lobel, representing the client here who's with me. To my left, April Arisante, Principal of Core Empowerment LLC. To my right, Derek Small, another principal of the business. In the front row is Tomas Gonzalez, who's their principal. Collectively, they, they make up, with other investors, a 96% owned by women and people of color entity. The other members of the team who are at the desk are our architect, Kristen Gianatassio. Dan Litsky is representing our security interest. He's, he is a principal at Kroll Consulting. We also have our traffic consultant from Howard Stein Hudson with us, and there, oh yeah, I'm sorry, another principal, Perry Higgins, is in the audience over there as well. The proposal today before you is a cannabis establishment to be located at 401 Center Street in Jamaica Plain. Street in Jamaica Plain. This is a 6,000-square-foot facility. It is a below-ground facility, which is accessible, of course, by street level in this particular district. This is a conditional use, local convenience, Article 55. The 6,000-square-feet size of the facility is ample to handle the capacity, and I can walk you through that in a minute. We're also going to have a pickup-drop-off area on Center Street in front of the facility. The applicant is in the process of obtaining off-street parking within a quarter-mile radius. The applicant has agreed to a police detail for the, for a minimum of the first month to manage and handle logistics relating to parking, or longer, depending on if E13 sees fit. The applicant has developed a one-month plan for its initial opening in working with the community, as well as working with Council O'Malley's office. They've agreed to the first month to be appointment-only, but with the ability to do walk-ins should capacity allow. And we are also in the process of working with the Hyde, Hyde Square Merchants Association to create a shared valet zone for all the businesses in the area. It's kind of a separate effort that's underway, but that Core and the team are, are, are working on. I thought, just from sitting in the room, you were asking a lot about how the flow works, and I thought it might be helpful to kind of walk you through that right now, if that's okay, Madam Chair. And just kind of turning to page five might be the easiest page to, to go through, for me to just kind of walk you through how, how it will work. But we're anticipating about 350 people a day to go through the, the building. The building itself, however, given its size and given the layout, has capacity for, for well over that, probably closer to, comfortably, I could say, and we don't think this is going to happen, but I don't want to, but comfortably, we can, we could handle 1,500 people a day if need be. But we think it's, that number's going to be closer to 350. And the way people are going to engage with the operation is they'll walk in on Center Street at the entrance. There will be one of our greeters right inside that doorway, asking people to have their ID ready. If they're handicapped, at that point, they would enter the lift and they would go down to the, to the basement level, which is about a, about a 12-foot-high-ceilinged area. They would walk into this reception area, which has substantial capacity for people in and of itself of about three dozen people, two to three dozen people at that, about 26, I think is the number. And at that point, they would have the ID check with the security personnel at the reception desk. That's labeled, I, number two on page five. They would then go immediately to their left, and I think on this picture, you'll see it, the beige coloring is where all the, the public spaces for the entire facility. The slightly darker beige coloring is where the fulfillment of orders, the quote-unquote "the dispensary itself" will conduct its operations. There you see five point-of-sale systems where our staff will be. We could increase that, as it stands today, up to eight. And people would go into that dispensary to fulfill their orders. There's ample queuing area out in this educational display, and, and if need be, even, even further out into the other areas of this kind of beige area. There is a security desk at that dispensary entrance. That security desk might, will also be where online fulfillment of orders would handle, would be handled. So if you went online ahead of time and, and ordered, you don't have to wait in the line there. There'll be a separate line and access where you can grab what you've already ordered and paid for ahead of time. And then, once you've handled that, you're going to return the way you entered, and you're going to go back out of the building.
And this storage means storage of, of items?
Yeah, product. This is a secure area for employees only. Each of the, each of the doors are going to be secured for your level of access, depending on who you are in the, as an employee. The product itself will come in through a separate door off Center Street on the leftmost part of the building, or of the space, where staff, or security staff will, on a randomized basis, arrive, enter the building, drop off the product, pick up anything they need to pick up, and then leave.
I'm sorry, will they come off of Perkins Street, or?
Off of Center Street.
Off of Center?
Yeah, the Perkins Street access is, is not what we're going to be using. There is access there, but we're not using that access.
Okay. And how many times do you anticipate delivery?
Delivery will be randomized several times a week. I think we're, we're talking about three, at least three times a week for delivery.
And will you be preparing packaging products, or will they come prepared?
So all products are, are childproofed. There's no loose leaf flour. It's all been packaged, prepackaged at points outside of this dispensary. None of the production, or assemblage, or any of that occurs on-site. Everything comes in secured and also childproofed, and, and commensurate with the state regulations.
And will you have edibles there, too?
Yes, there will be. I mean, edibles is, is a, is a grand term for what has really been, is more better probably described as a lozenge or a tincture. As you know, the state regulations don't allow, you know, animal shapes or certain items to be wrapped colorfully, but yes, there'll be, that'll be available as well.
Tell us about security.
Sure.
Sorry. Just go with security?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll take that. My name is Dan Linsky. I'm a security consultant from Kroll. I'll be working with the core team on this. We will exceed the state standards for cameras and access control, limited access control. In addition, we've developed a good neighbor policy, that the first time you come into the facility, you sign an educational notice, that you will put on notice of the rules and regulations relative to cannabis, how you can transport it, the safe utilization of it at your home, the safe consumption of it, how you store it properly, keep it from being utilized by children, or diverted to people underage. That includes utilizing any of the product in public spaces and the neighbors surrounding us. And once you identify yourself, you sign that pledge, we scan your identity to the system, you go and make your product selection, and you leave the facility. You don't have to repeat that on the second time you hear if you've already been a customer. However, if we get notification from anyone in law enforcement, anyone from the community that one of our customers has gone and violated their policy, we will immediately send them a notice of trespass, and they won't be allowed to return back to our facility. We are working with Camp Control Commission, make sure we have a certified RFID program so that the product coming in will be tracked from seat to sale. And any, we've worked very hard in liaising with law enforcement and the various community groups, so that if there's any concerns outside of the security issue, with quality-of-life issues in the neighborhood, they can contact us, in addition to Boston Police, and we can legally turn over information to them in a timely manner to make sure we're dealing with it.
And what are your anticipated hours of operation?
We're 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Every day?
Seven days.
Okay.
Is the enterprise leasing the ground floor, or do you own the, or you own?
Will be leasing.
So you will have no patrol of who the tenants are on the street level?
No.
Mr. Linsky, how many staff, security staff we have on?
Because of the hours, we're going to actually try and have overlapping staff, just because it's not a typical eight-hour day. Typically, it'll be two personnel that have security responsibility, in addition to supplemented by Boston Police Details. The details from the community feedback we heard, I find they're probably, you know, I'm not as concerned about the safety and security of the facility as we are the traffic and pedestrian management, and having the officer kind of manage the curb outside the facility. But we'll be supplemented by BPD as long as 13 decides that, you know, it's of interest and they think it's a worthy event.
So that, that is part of my question. So how many, how do you guys decide when you need details and when you don't?
Well, I think we definitely need details at the start. We want to make sure how the system runs, how it goes. We would like, from my background, I like to see details more often. I also, we've talked to the client about, you know, maybe not having the detail in front of our store, but maybe having a detail that's in the neighborhood, performing general patrols that can supplement BPD's resources, whereas, you know, a robbery at the store was a concern, but I don't think the priority concern with the access control and the cameras that we have, it's kind of the quality-of-life around the facility we want to make sure is ongoing. That's a discussion with the captain. As you know, sometimes BPD officers are run thin during some of the festivals and times. The client has been willing to, if need be, put it on reimbursable overtime, to make it a mandatory assignment if the district determines that that's something they want to do. Still into the South Bay Mall, we were never able to fill that detail assignment. Once we made it reimbursable overtime, it's part of the minimum staffing at District 6. We certainly would be willing to consider that, but take our leave from, from the district, who's in tune with what's going on in the community. There may be times, scaling, whether it's, you know, do we need it seven days a week, or is it the Friday-Saturday rush that we want to do it? So I think being flexible and adjusting with BPD based on the needs. We also don't want to take resources away if they need them for other non-private entities. And if that's the case, and we feel we need to supplement, we certainly can upscale our personnel at the, at the facility.
And you did make another statement, which I, which I, which you trespass people. How will we know, you know, Bill Smith walks down the street and he gets stopped by officer? Will we know that he's a problem because he's using marijuana, or she's using marijuana in a place, and we have our tag on it? Is that, I mean?
So if our tag is found, we can certainly track that right away. If somebody suspects, hey, we saw this guy come out of your facility, someone snaps a photograph in the neighborhood and says, hey, this guy was in the park causing concerns for us, we can go back through our, our video system, go back and look at who came in that day, and say, you know what? That guy's wearing the same clothes here. He purchased from us two hours ago. Thank you very much. We're going to make sure he doesn't come back to our facility.
And first time is going to be?
Zero tolerance.
Zero tolerance. Okay.
Okay. And tell us about staffing. How many staff do you anticipate greeters being on-site?
So 12 per shift, 24 total is going to be our initial staffing effort. However, for the first month, we'd like to have over 100% staff on-site, so that we're handling any kind of initial capacity concerns. So we'll probably staff up, up to about 150%, maybe 16, 18 people that, that first month, and then ratchet it back to about 12 people there, you know, moving forward.
How are we going to let in at a time?
We can, so there's, there is actually a capacity sheet on page, on the back of the page. I have 146 that we've, that we've roughed out, based on the, the size of the facility itself. We, we mentioned about 350 over the course of the day, average time, five to 10 minutes per person, allowing a throughput. We're thinking it's around 20 to 30 an hour, but there are peak hours and peak times. So even with our staff, we don't think we'll ever get to that number of 146 at any one time. But it, it allows a lot of cushion for us. Like I said, we, we think we could easily handle 1,500 people over the course of the day, but we don't think we'll, we'll get to that, to that number.
And this is just a general question, and I am asking you, but I, I was thinking about it and should ask before. The line queues around the corner, we start to think that it's too many people. How do we handle that safety issue?
Yeah, we can cut the line?
So I was going to say, so to start, we agreed to an appointment system for the first month. And given the size of our location, we can easily take in 130 people at a time, so lessening the lines. So our goal in sort of doing all of this was to make sure that we weren't impacting the neighborhood, that we weren't causing lines. One of the reasons we chose the downstairs space was that, for that reason, and its size. So even if we had lines, we're working with the restaurants and all the businesses, so that people can go and visit other locations and patronize other businesses. We'll have like a queuing system that people can sort of, not like a, like a beeper, more like a texting system. You know, you're done, your number's up, and I'm back in line. And all of the technologies and advances that exist today in the industry, we hope to implement those in the beginning of our.
Given the fact that Hyde Square is very busy now, and that parking is a terrible problem there, how are you actually going to handle the parking?
My concern is with 300 people a day, I don't know, so we did, Stein Hudson can answer how many cars are coming.
Yeah.
But where do they go?
Yeah. So for starters, one of the things that we agreed to work on is the current issue, which is the parking and traffic. So there is very little enforcement right now, and very poor signage. So the merchants, us in the city, have approached BTD to basically help ameliorate that situation. So that's one of our first steps towards that. The other step is we are working with local open lots to make sure that we can acquire escape.
Where is the lot that you're proposing that's within a quarter mile?
It's on the, you'll see it at the back of your sheet. Yeah, page seven on your sheet. It's 300 feet within our location.
Yeah, give me the address.
It's Barber Street, but the technical address would have been 280 South Huntington Ave. Because the building faces Huntington Ave, the parking lot is on Barber Street.
Right. Part of my concern is how you work the relationship with the parking, which is right next door to you, which is Whole Foods, which is generally very much subscribed most of the time. And it is, would be so attractive for your people just to pull into.
It's attractive for any business.
Right, right.
It's not just our business. Everybody does that.
I, I understand, but how is that, in fact, regulated?
So, so the whole, the whole kind of security and staff effort is to prevent the double parking, the parking and residential permit parking, the "I'll just be in and I'm going to run in and come out," and the parking in Whole Foods. We're going to have people outside observing.
Outside.
If anyone does any of those things, they're just not going to be allowed in. We're, and absolutely, there's a lot of repeat customers for these dispensaries. People start to get the hang of it, and if we tell them that down on Barber Street, less than, you know, a two-minute walk away, that they can park there, they're going to park there the first time and every time thereafter.
The question about the Barber Street lot, is that a dedicated lot for your operation only, or is it simply a shared lot that residents and other entities use?
The effort, the goal here is to create a dedicated lot of a minimum of 12 parking spaces for us and only us. And separate and apart from that, there's this other effort to create a valet zone for all the restaurateurs in Hyde Park. And our being there and just being able to hire Howard Stein Hudson and make the applications to help that happen. So, so we're, we're going to, with two different efforts, we're going to have this shared valet zone, hopefully, as well as our own dedicated parking.
So from Howard Stein Hudson, can they articulate the number of anticipated trips?
Yeah. He's actually here, and I'm holding a traffic management report. We've done a lot of work on that. Is, Brian?
Here.
One thing I'd like to also mention is that I think we're the only cannabis dispensary applicant that's actually met with the Transportation Commissioner, Gina Pena, to express some of the neighborhood concerns, as well as addressing some of the issues in the area. As far as projected trips, we were looking at, I believe, 10 to 15 peak hour trips, and I think that's an extremely conservative assessment as far as vehicles, because this is a exceedingly accessible area from transit and a bike perspective. You have access from the orange line and the green line at Heath Street and Jackson Square, as well as the 39 bus that runs along it. And there's also a blue bike station right across the street. So while we are providing parking, and we think it will be ample parking, the, we're going to encourage people to take transit and walk and bike as much as they.
What is the level of service right now on Center Street in that location? Is it F?
Yeah, it's E, EDF, yes.
So already Center Street is over-subscribed with traffic?
For vehicles.
From personal experience, there is increased incidence of double parking. It's almost starting to approach.
And we met with the commissioner to step up the enforcement in that area.
But so, so Barber, Barber Street is supposed to provide you with 12 spaces. Is there an application and process for ancillary parking related to this project?
No, no, there is not. We're not looking to tie, we're not looking to specifically tie parking to this application. We were doing it in an effort to exhaust all possible options in terms of identifying, should we need to, should it require, be required that we have to, for some reason, some zoning triggers, I mean, we'll obviously come back here. But the goal here is to provide resources, and it's not just related to the Barber Street lot, it's not just related to the valet option and the zone. We're also talking about our own employees, hiring locally, fully subsidizing them for MBTA passes, and other resources. We've actually produced a one-page, month-one.
But, but, I mean, to, to pick up on the customer perspective?
Yeah.
You know, there's got to be somewhat of a long-term look at this, because, you know, enforcement comes and goes, you know? And we, I think the community needs to be sure that, in fact, this is going to be something constant, there's going to be a constant spot where they can rely on customers to park, you know? And that's why I ask about the ancillary parking application.
The way it was handled at the city level thus far is in our host community agreement, one of the items that they require, and I can submit this for the record, is that the company agrees to the representations it made to the community regarding a shared valet zone, a pickup-drop-off zone, and police details. So the city's Emerging Technologies Office wants to hold us to those commitments that we made in the community, and we're prepared to do that. We think there's kind of ample security in this, in this contract to, to protect the community of that concern, but we're open to any other kind of ideas that, that the board might have.
And then you started talking about hiring. Tell us how you're going to be focused on hiring from the community.
I'd love to. So one of the things that we're going to do in our effort, we're going to be hosting job fairs with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation, Urban Edge, Mildred Haley, and the Union of Minority Neighborhoods. So we're working in collaboration with all of those CDCs and neighborhood development groups to put together, one, a job fair, and two, like a small screening for our potential employees.
So it's JP NDC?
JP NDC, Urban Edge, Mildred Haley, and Union of Minority Neighborhoods. So all JP-based groups.
If you are granted approval today, how, how long do you expect for you to open?
We've thrown out October as a date for when we would open, fall time.
Okay. Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal, and also like to stress that there has been an extensive community process related to this, specifically around the quality of life concerns that you guys have brought up. I do want to put on the record that this proposal is supported by JP zoning, the Jamaica Pond Association, and also the businesses in the Hyde Square area. I also want to make a commitment that they have been in touch with the Commissioner's office at BTD, and the parking mitigation and enforcement around this issue is something that's priority for the city as well. And we will be continuing to work with both the applicants and also businesses in that area to make sure some of that quality-of-life issues improves. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Pop Webster from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. We would like to also go on record in support, as was stated, this project has gone through this extensive community process, gone to every neighborhood association that we've asked them to. It did receive support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council after a bunch of discussion. Primary on the council's mind has been making sure that their impacts on the neighborhood are positive, to make sure that this fits into the fabric of the neighborhood. And he's received assurances from the applicant that there will be appointment-only for the first month, and so they're going to be managing some of that initial demand and continuing to work with the community. So that's why we're going on record in support. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Bob Spoyea, Chair of the Street. I'd like to say, the purpose of this group is to encourage children to see the use of drugs. It's located with. is to encourage children to see the use of drugs. It's located within, just without the two-block radius of the large public school. It's on the route where children are walking and all the buses are going by. 350 customers going in and out is a good sign for children that drug use is okay. And that's the purpose of my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Gori. I'm a resident of 111 Perkins Street in Jamaica Plain, nearby this site, actually at the intersecting street. But I also wanted to say that I'm a card-carrying patient of the medical marijuana program. I've attended all five public meetings and had offline meetings with the proponents, quite comfortable with their proposal. All the feedback that was heard at all the public meetings, I feel, has been addressed, to your point, Madam Chair, and to Member Pizani's questions about some of the traffic. Knowing these other dispensaries throughout the city, Somerville and Cambridge, Brookline, et cetera, people don't drive to these facilities at rush hour. So the challenge is related to rush hour, where I've lived since 1998, on Perkins Street, where I don't own a car, with the 39 bus, Stony Brook, Jackson Square, and Heath Street. It is frankly a red herring. People will not drive here. If they do, they may or may not Uber. But this is a transit-oriented site, if ever there was one. There is plenty of access, there's plenty of parking in the off-hours. I recognize that people will seek to potentially park in the neighborhood during peak, but no one's going to drive there. So I'll just, again, register my support.
Thank you. So please, the burden now on the rest of you is to give us new information, okay? Otherwise, just put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Gerald Robbins. I'm with Hyde Jackson Square Main Street. I do have a statement. I'll take the synopsis of that.
Just highlight, please. Just give us the highlight.
Well, we think it's core empowerment, it would be really good for the neighborhood. It would bring foot traffic into a long vacant commercial space in the neighborhood. We are a little less concerned about some of the traffic issues in the neighborhood. More foot traffic is good for the businesses. It's good for the perceptions of safety and safety itself. They've done a really good job with outreach in the community, and have heard some of the concerns in the community, and have decided to address some of those things, and have addressed some of those things. In light of that, any new incoming business has, has challenges, and has challenges in the neighborhood. So we do have some recommendations on things that they're working on, some things that they could be working on to better themselves in the community.
Thank you. Can we hear the next person?
Okay.
Thank you. We've, what is this, the fourth one, the fifth one we've heard today?
Morning. Seamus Moynihan, 73 Biner Street, JP. Just want to say I'm in full support of this business. I know everyone is worried about traffic and parking. By the time these guys open, there are going to be several stores in the greater Boston area. I don't drink alcohol anymore, but when I did, I didn't get in my car and drive to another neighborhood and look for parking. I went to the store that was closest to my house, which is what people are going to do once there are more open up. I know also worried about children seeing and walking by. There aren't going to be flashing neon signs like there are at the liquor store that we walk past every day. Children aren't going to be allowed in like they are at the liquor store. I think this group of people has gone above and beyond with mitigation and community input, and I'm happy to have them in my name.
Thank you.
Just to make it short. And I'll say, I grew up in the area, neighborhood, and I run an organization here at the City Hall Plaza, about 50, 60,000 people, most of them youth and middle-aged, not middle-aged, just 20, 30s. We get hit with the support at all the time from other dispensaries. Didn't know too much about it. Met Mr. Gonzalez, decided I needed to know what's going on before we support it. Very professional. Went to a couple of the meetings prior to that, where it was unbelievable, the requests that they, they put these people through, they asked. And the second meeting I went to, they were on point with everything, and it's, I think our community, as you see, it's a big thing in our communities. They're minority-owned, but not only minority-owned, they're all from the community, and it's great to see that. They're actually working within the community, and we support them.
Hi. My name is Michelle Saltani. I have been around Mission Hill and the JP for 30 years, business owner in Hyde Square. The neighbors are very excited about this business, because something is happening. We need the business like this attract more foot traffic. Nothing would sustain between the Jackson and Hyde Square if we have not done nothing. Because as it is, they're all a small business, they are going to disappear one by one. We are here to support it, and they did whatever they could humanly possible for the district, and they're very responsible to any neighbors they had any concern. Thank you.
Okay, can I ask the, thank you very much. Can I ask the next three people to just put your name and address on the record, okay?
Hi, my name is Migna Colon. I am minority owner of the residential property in Jamaica Plain, one block from the business.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm supportive.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm in Jamaica Plain. My name is Cindy Valada, and I'm here to support.
What, what's your address?
117 Hoover Street.
Okay, thank you. Now, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record, and tell us briefly what your opposition is based on.
Thank you. My name is Susan Mahoney, and I am here representing the businesses and residents who are within the 300-foot circumference.
So Ms. Mahoney, what's your address?
31 Boilsen Street, Jamaica Plain.
Okay, thanks.
Born and raised.
Thank you.
Okay, so those businesses are, in our opposition are, Boston Private Bank and Trust Company, Beauty Master Supply Company, Center Street Liquors, The Food Wall Restaurant, Mark W. Miller, Offices of Attorney and Counsel, Jamaica Plain Laundry Service.
Excuse me, ma'am. If you want to submit that list, you can, but in the meantime, tell us what your opposition is based on. Okay, just keep it, give us bullet points, okay?
All right, bullet point. As you already discussed, it's a matter of parking.
Okay.
There is no specific plan for the parking. As far as I know, I've been to six of the core empowerment meetings, and they have not come up with a specific plan for parking
and traffic and congestion in the Hyde Square area. Thank you.
It meets at a rotary, and there are eight lanes of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can you please submit that to Alta? She's right here, okay? Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Erlich, would you entertain the same proviso that we put on Brookline Avenue?
Yes.
This petitioner only?
This applicant only.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
There is. Can I, can I just add to make maybe another proviso, just that they live up to the agreement that they have with the neighborhood?
Um, no, we just, we usually don't do that. We just put it precisely to what the zoning requirement is, okay? So the provisos to this applicant only. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your own second.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 907. Calling the next case, calling BOA 907-735-4014, Washington Street. Could you please take your conversations outside, please?
Just to get them out.
This is to add live entertainment to a restaurant. Violation to Article 67, Section 11. Restaurant with live entertainment is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Plinio Tagoa. I'm an attorney and associate with MAW Law, located at 111 Everett Avenue, Suite 1E in Chelsea, Massachusetts, 02150. To my immediate left is the owner of the premises, Gira y Tambora LLC, Felipe Duran.
So tell us what's being proposed. What's the name of the restaurant that's currently there, and what does live entertainment mean, mean in this case?
So the, the name of the restaurant is Gira y Tambora, 414 Washington. And the, it would be a space for local artists to play Caribbean Hispanic music in Rosendale.
So this came in before for that space in the front. Did that get reduced at all, or did that just stay? Because it was first built and then it came to us.
Yeah, it's already, it's already done. I have some pictures I can...
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I know we asked for design review to reduce the size of that front space, and I'm suspecting that didn't happen, but it's good to see what it looks like. But go ahead, tell us about the live entertainment.
So the, we already have a non-live entertainment license. The non-live entertainment, this, the live entertainment would not significantly change anything, wouldn't have any effect.
What would live entertainment be?
It would be local Caribbean Hispanic artists coming in to play.
Like guitars?
Guitarists playing pop, you know, Hispanic pop.
Because I know the last time the project was before us, the, the reason for adding that front piece was that neighbors were concerned about the level of noise that they were hearing. And then you're adding another level of noise internally, so...
This, this would probably act, this live entertainment would probably actually be less noise, because it would be mostly acoustic music and local artists. But the addition for that was related to one other. Part of the reason we got the non-live license back was because the complaints came from one specific individual. So when we went to the Licensing Commission to get our non-live license back, they, we submitted pictures, which we also submitted with the application here, which shows soundproofing to the premises. And we also talked about the vestibule and additional security.
And tell us about the hours.
So the, the hours currently are to 10:40, 10:45.
And is that what you anticipate it continuing to be?
Yeah.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizani?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? And this is only for internal, not for the summertime in the little patio?
Patio, no, just internal.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Bobbidge from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of their live entertainment. We did complete the community process, and they have been continuing to work with the neighbors regarding the noise levels, and it seems like they're making significant improvements as they soundproof the walls inside the building and build the structure up front. So again, we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Walter?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Afwai, Council McCarthy's office. We'd also like to echo the sentiment of the Mayor's office, that they continue to work with the neighborhood regarding reducing the noise on the site. Rather than that, we'd like to offer our support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Quick question. What's the capacity? What is it?
90.
90?
98.
98. So you just went under the threshold for, is there a sprinkler system in there?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
There is? Okay.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 998-82101 Kilmonick Street. The applicant seeks to continue to use premises on the open-air public lot for free, per fee. Capacity of 15 spaces beyond the existing expiration date of December 31, 2019. The violation to Article 6, Section 3A. Additional condition to restrict the parking district. An Article 66, Section 8. Open-air parking lot is forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Attorney David A. Gottlieb, address 309 Washington Street, Brighton and May 02135. I represent Stanhope Garage, the owner and operator of the parking lot at 101 Kilmonick Street. The applicant seeks to continue to use the premises as a fee-paid public parking lot, parking 15 cars past the expiration date of December 31, 2019. Previously, in the previous board decision, the board instructed us to go to Boston Planning and Development Agency Design Review. I worked, Matthew Martin of the DPDA provided me with instructions to improve the lot's landscaping. That was done in 2018. I submitted four photos in the record. It's dated April 23, 2018. You're going to see extensive improvements to the landscaping, including planted bushes, and also trees, and also a new curb. It's a gray handsome curb there. Those photos will also show you that, that there is an ornamental black metal fence spanning along Kilmonick Street. In regards to my community outreach, I got in touch with Yessel Guerrero at the Neighborhood Services. She asked me that I get in touch with the Fenway Civic Association. I reached out to them. Fenway Civic Association was nice enough to speak with me over the phone. President Tim Horn, Tim Horn, actually sent me a letter, and I'm going to enter that letter into the record. It mentions that we have done substantial work there in terms of landscaping and fencing. And I'm here to answer your questions and see if we can get a three-year extension that I would be requesting until December 31, 2019.
So we've, we've, in the past, given two-year extensions?
I would ask for three.
But I'm asking, in the past, we've given two-year extensions?
Yes, the last extension. Actually, the last extension was, I believe, a three-year extension. I actually have the decision. If you just wait one moment, I can provide you with that.
Meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Pizani?
Adroit. You've brought in a new set of plans, okay? You can't really deal with that, because you have to submit it to ISD.
These are actually the exact same plans I submitted to ISD on January 4, 2019.
So nothing changed?
Nothing's changed. Do you want these plans?
You have, you don't have an existing condition plan. The plan that we have in front of us is the plan that the BPDA might...
Correct. And that's the plan that they took at, took at ISD, that they, that it was sufficient to ISD, because it actually shows, yeah, little change made by Matthew Martin at BPDA. So we just, we just used that plan and submitted it to ISD.
Do you have pictures with you? We don't have anything here.
Correct. So I entered four photos into, into the record from April 23, 2018.
Just sending them.
Of course, we've had a long and cold winter here, so we have to do additional work once it gets warmer out and there's a thaw.
Hold on. So the plans are adequate. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Chair members of the board, Yessel Guerrero with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, only because they have support from the Fenway Civic Association. At this time, we recognize that parking is obviously a huge need in the Fenway, given the events. But with that, we defer to you guys in regards to two years or three.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a three-year extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, we're here. Were we supposed to see you around now for South End?
Let me give you some updates on South End.
No, we need to have that as an agenda item, so I just want to remind you that...
There was no, no. You, the decision was entered March 1, 2019. We went yesterday, submitted an application to the Landmarks Commission. That's the update for South End.
So you didn't, because you were supposed to come up with a screening and buffering plan for that parking lot?
That has been submitted to the Landmarks Commission yesterday. We, we got a decision that entered March 1, 2019.
And this is for the parking lot?
On Charmond Avenue, correct.
And you needed to go to Landmarks?
Correct. We did. BPDA and also Landmarks. That's what they told us at ISD.
So let's find a point. If you could contact the office to have a look at the plans, because we don't want to have it slip off our radar, okay?
So, we'll go to Landmarks, and then I'll get in touch with...
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's almost 2 o'clock in the afternoon. We're going to finish up the 10:30 cases right now. Case BOA 918-834-190 North Beacon Street. Changing the office from a store to a brewery with a small restaurant and fit-out for a brewery. Brewery on-site with a grain room, support areas, bar, kitchen, and dining area. Bathroom innovations and upgrades. Violation to Article 51, Section 16. Brewery is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jonathan Gilman. I currently reside at 163 Belmont Street in Belmont.
Molly Pigeon. I reside at 371 Pearl Street, Malvin, Mass. This is regarding 190 North Beacon.
And Alex Corona residing at 163 Belmont, Unit 2, Belmont, Mass.
Okay, so tell us quickly what you're proposing.
Hello, Madam Chairman of the Board. My name is Molly Pigeon, and with Pigeon and Company Construction Management Firm, here to represent Rado Brew House and Kitchen. We're in front of the board, obviously, for the zoning violation, and we would like to have more of a restaurant use at this location with an ancillary factory use as brewery. The brewery itself is only for production within the confines of the restaurant, and it is not for manufacturing and distribution.
Okay, so, and this is an existing, this was, this was a store, was that a store with it?
Yes, it's a change of use. It was an electro, an electrical distribution warehouse, so they sell lighting and other items.
And how many seats in the restaurant?
The seats in the restaurant is a planned 128.
I'm sorry?
Planned 128 seats. Planned 128 seats, and the allowable is 141. That also includes staff.
Okay, the occupancy is 141?
Correct.
And tell us how the parking will work?
In cooperation with the community. When we met with the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association, they preferred that we did not have parking on-site itself. So we are going to be heavily relying upon a lot of the ride-sharing programs that many of the breweries in the city rely on, that we've seen and worked with. In addition to that, we are seeking some possible employee parking with a neighboring lot directly adjacent to our property.
So is the main use the brewery, or is the main use the restaurant?
Technically, the main use would be the restaurant, and we're brewing on-site for on-site consumption only.
Okay, so your main use is the restaurant and the... So this is an ally zone, local industrial zone?
The zone is...
Neighborhood shopping one, I believe? Yeah.
It's neighborhood shopping?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and is restaurant an allowed use?
It is. A restaurant is an allowed use, yes.
Okay, how is your restaurant? Okay. So the reason you're here is for the brewery space. Okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions about the brewery? No? How the plan for Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Mr. Biggs, though?
You're going to have indoor and outdoor seating as well, seasonal.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think if we're going to stay here this long, if anybody comes in here with food and beer, we'd be happy.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. My predecessor conducted an abutter's meeting, May 24, 2018. No major opposition was raised. They also, as they mentioned, they went to the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association, received a favorable vote from them as well. With the close proximity to Guest Street and Boston Landing, we think this is going to be a great opportunity for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Daniel Polanco. We have Council Mark Cio. We would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. I'll be Assistant Counsel Elijah Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with B.R.A.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling the first case for rediscussions, calling BOA 874-955-134 Chelsea Street. This is a full interior renovation of an existing five-unit residential building. Added bedrooms, new finishes throughout. Violates Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod.
Well, just hold on.
Paul, hold on a second. I gave you two. Sorry, it's been a long day. I got it. All right. Let's start over again. Calling BOA 874-955-134 Chelsea Street. This is seeking to change the occupancy from a two-family in-store to a four-family dwelling and renovate the building, including a rear addition, a four-story addition, and installation of fire protection system. Violation of Article 9, Section 2. Change of use of a 2F in a store is conditional. Article 53, Section 56. Lot-street parking and loading, none is proposed. Article 53, Section 8. The proposed MFR is conditional. Article 53, Section 9. Insufficient additional lot area. Article 53, Section 9. Excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9. Insufficient open space. Article 53, Section 9. Insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9. Insufficient rayaad setback. Article 53, Section 9. The number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9. The maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 54. Screening and buffering, none is proposed. And Article 53, Section 52. Roof structure restrictions and increase in the roof profile height. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jeff Drago with Drago and Siskel, Madam 53rd Broad Street. Here with Josh Hederman from City Realty, the owners and all of the project. James Christopher from RCA Architects. We're proposing to change the occupancy.
Okay, so just a quick question. This rear addition, Mr. Christopher, what is the dimension of that? And is it just on the third floor? Or is it the entire building?
It's the entire building. Madam Chair, the rear addition dimension is proposed at 15' 11" in length.
So that... Madam Chair, if I could just jump in for a second. Our original proposal was at 19 feet.
Yeah.
And the reason we deferred is to work with our adjacent abutter. We are now 12 feet 5 inches by 21' 5".
By 21' 5", and then the...
And that has changed since our last time.
Is that 12 foot and blue to deck?
With the decks.
Yes. The addition itself is 12' 6", and there's just balconies.
Small balconies.
Six feet balconies, okay?
Correct. But what we also changed is the last time we were presenting, we're going to present, if there were staircases off the deck, we've moved those to interiors.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. So it's 12 feet plus 6 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And so you're bumping back that top floor with a deck on the front?
So the top floor is pulled in 10 feet 4 and 1/2 inches.
Okay, so can you quickly talk through the sufficient rear yard? Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We had a house in a abutter's meeting, I'm sorry, back in October 3. And we deferred the case after hearing some concerns from the director of abutters about the fourth floor and also the commitment about no roof deck. I think this is a good project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve... Yeah, we'll leave BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
889-104-306 K Street. This is a full interior renovation of an existing five-unit residential building. Violation of Article 27S, Section 5, in the South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
While she's doing that, can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law LLC, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. With me to my right is Matt Morgan, one of the principals of Torrington Properties, which owns the building and has their office located in South Boston. And to his right is our architect, Derek Rubenoff.
So why were you deferred the last time?
We were asked by ONS to do so, Madam Chair, but it was not entirely clear to us what the precise issue was. So we had a further meeting and made some attempted outreach to some of our abutters, and here we are again.
So it was a 5-foot, five-unit building, and it stays a five-unit building?
Yes, it's a five-unit building. Remains a five-unit building. Complete gut renovation. Upgrade of all the systems. Installation of fire suppression system. Complete gut renovation of building.
Yeah, so the only violation is the iPod.
Sole issue before this board is an interim planning overlay district permit, yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did request that they defer last time to do additional outreach to the neighborhood based on concerns around parking, construction management, other things that come up unrelated to zoning. But we would like to go on record in full support today because it is just a renovation of an existing building, and there's no expansion to the building envelope. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this project. There is tremendous opposition coming from the abutters. It's just too dense for the neighborhood. The parking is a big issue. And I would also like to put on record that the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is also in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor Asabi George's office. There's been an abutter's meeting, and the 20 abutters that attended were all opposed to the project. The Civic Association opposed also, and we're going to oppose this project. Thank you.
This is Jeb Banks. I'm a director abutter. I live at 304 K Street, and I'm in opposition to this project. I attended the meeting on January 12, as did approximately 20 of my neighbors, all in opposition to this project due to the increased number of bedrooms of the project and related parking in an already cramped neighborhood.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, may I...
Madam Chair, I have a couple of letters of support that I'd like to submit for the record.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? I know it's getting late. Let's get out of here. May I have a motion?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Any other oppositions? So it's denied without prejudice?
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 896-628-535 East Ford Street. This is to renovate the interior of an existing detached three-family apartment building, including changing the interior partition layout. Violation of Article 27S, Section 5. It's in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 29. Roof structure restrictions. The roof deck requires access by roof hatch and or bulkhead, no more than 30 inches in height and above such deck. Article 68, Section 8. Side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty and Miller, 28th State Street, Street 802 here in Boston. With me to my right is Derek Rubenoff of Rubenoff Architects. With me to my left is Jason Weisman of the Property Ownership and Development. We handed out a packet of information. There have been some changes to this project. They are incorporated in the plans in front of Mr. Pizzani. As of this time, they have gone to ISD for their review. The project site, 535 East Ford, is between G Street and H Street. It's in the Gate of Heaven neighborhood of South Boston. The lot's about 1,400 square feet. It's an existing building at the property. It's a three-family, three-story existing building. It's about 4,500 gross square feet at the property. The appellant...
So let me see if I understand this.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're basically doing a rehab of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're only adding a private roof deck, and the occupancy stays the same?
So as of right now, the occupancy is staying the same. So the original proposal was for, to keep the three-family but to add bedrooms akin to the project just before you, before this one. However, we've had two abutter meetings with the neighborhood, including February 27, which was a few weeks ago. We heard significant concerns with that amount of bedrooms. We dropped it to, we had dropped it to a three-family with each being a three-bedroom, two-bath, which would have been nine total bedrooms. Again, we heard concerns with that. So we've now, since the plans in front of Mr. Pizzani are now to keep the occupancy as is with two-bedroom, two-bath on the three-family. And what we've also done in listening to the concerns of the neighbors is we are proposing a roof deck. The roof deck was originally proposed as 200 square feet. We've since reduced that down to 100 square feet. And we also heard concerns about utilizing an existing headhouse, which is up there for just roof access, but there was no roof deck on the existing building. And what we've actually proposed now, again, this was a direct request from the abutters, was to get rid of that headhouse, which we've done, and now access is via a zoning code compliant skylight hatch. So as a result of these revised plans, if I may, just quickly, we no longer, is our understanding, we no longer need relief from Article 68. We were originally cited for roof structure restrictions because of that existing headhouse and using it for access to the roof. Now that's gone because we're proposing to remove that and have a skylight hatch. We're also proposing to move the roof deck because we're getting rid of the headhouse. We now can have access within, outside of the side yard setback. So we don't need that anymore either. This is an iPod-only case.
It's an iPod-only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
The changes are reflected.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, specifically stating our support for the two-bedroom units and then also the reduced size of the roof deck. Thank you.
Okay, line up, ladies, if you're going to speak in support. If you're going to speak in opposition, please line up.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. We ideally would like to see a deferral for this case. They did try working with the abutters, but we would like them to come back to the neighborhood and present the new plans and have the input of the community on these new plans that has been proposed at the moment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Karen Foley, Counselor Asabi George's office. And we echo the sentiments of Counselor Flynn's office. And we oppose this project, but would like to see them come back to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. I'll be Assistant Counsel Elijah Michael.
The opponent, the council, stands in opposition with the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
My name's Jack Cherry. I'm an abutter.
What's your address?
549 East Ford Street.
Okay.
If I may for a minute. Originally, they tried to put...
No, I wasn't originally. I just wanted to know what your opposition is.
The reason why I oppose it is we had an abutter's meeting about two weeks ago, and we requested that they drop the, from three to two. And we did not get a commitment from the people, these gentlemen here, whether they would do it or not. I got a call from Counselors Flynn's office telling me that they had reduced it from three to two. But if you look at the plans, what they did was, they took the back bedroom, they removed the door and a small closet and deemed it to be a den. Mr. Pizzani, if you can see the back bedroom there? I have plans here.
I mean, let's, so your opposition is based on the fact that you want it to be a two-family?
A two-bedroom. And the fact that when they changed the plans, we feel as though the neighbors should be incorporated into this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
This was done a week, a week ago without any butters meeting.
Thank you.
All we asked for was have another butters meeting, show these plans, and let's see how it flies with the neighbors.
Okay.
Because it's not, it doesn't look kosher.
Thank you.
I know it's been late, quick response, we had a meeting on February 27th, it was our second butter meeting, there was a unsolicited vote taken by the neighborhood by Mr. Cherry himself, whether or not they would approve a two-bedroom, two-bath, three-units, and it was passed with these changes. I don't understand what the, what the efficiency would be to have a new, we did everything they asked, so...
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much, thank you.
But you'll keep, you'll keep in touch with me?
Yes, thank you.
Calling BOA 872-900-794, Sharmid Avenue. This is an approved roof deck with a fire balcony, basement habitable spaces and other related work. Change occupancy from a one-family to a two-family. Violation of Article 50, Section 29, lot size for a two-family is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard requirement is insufficient.
Thank you, ma'am, this, this is being livestreamed, okay? So you can watch it whenever you want to, okay?
Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Marie Elche Pierre.
Jean Tello.
Phil Perezco, Architect of Manstake.
Okay, so, Phil, update us on what, what you've done since you've been on board? Just speak up.
Okay, I will speak up, thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I've met with John, the owner, and he's gone over what his plan was, reviewed the documents, he obviously needs working drawings to build this out, to satisfy violations. We will do those drawings with fire alarm and appropriate, when we are, should this go, add as a two-family.
And so this is an existing two-family?
It's an existing one-family that John would like to make into a two-family.
And what are the unit sizes of each one?
Unit one is 1,773 square feet gross, unit two is 1,311 square feet.
And there's a roof deck, what's the dimension of the roof deck?
It's just a very small roof deck off the back, little balcony.
It's a second-floor roof deck or a roof, roof deck?
Right, yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay, and what's, what's in the basement, what is basement habitable spaces?
The habitable space would be the bedroom and there is a playroom and something...
What's, what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
The ceiling height is 8'7".
And the bedroom has enough, has, has external access?
It does, it does, it's just a window, it is a window.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
You, you did a site visit with Mr. Olick?
We did, we did.
And? Okay.
Looks as if they've corrected.
Well, I mean, as I recall, and now it's been a while, there were two issues, one is that there was a, there was an existing deck encroachment over the lot line. I mean, you just stood there and looked up and you could see that the deck was over the parking lot alongside, I mean, that, that can't fly.
No, it can't, we'll correct that.
Okay, and then I believe the other thing, then trying to recall, was there was some question about whether with two units with a mechanical room was going to be separated in such a way that...
It's going to be, sorry, forced hot water and it's going to be warm out for hot water on the heat and not water.
So is it's going to be separate, Phil, from your...
Yes, separate, and each unit has its own.
Separately accessed, though, not through the unit, from a separate door?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is that what the plan shows, I'm just looking at that now, Mr. Pizzani?
I can't pick that up on the plan.
It's in the closet in the second floor.
So, so Phil, you understand the question, right? So we want to make sure the utilities are not embedded in unit one, that they have separate access to the utilities?
Yes, the drawing A2 has an air handler right off the hallway opposite the bathroom.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the project. There was a community process and the neighbors went support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? I think we can hold the plans if we need corrected plans.
Well, I mean, I would prepare to make a motion for approval with proviso.
Okay, go ahead.
With two provisos, one, that the deck not encroach over the lot line, and two, that the access to the utilities is clearly distinct from each of the two different units.
I will get, I will get both those corrected, we will have an engineer meeting system and show them off.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm prepared to make it.
Then we'll hold for signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case, calling BOA 851-286-474, Hypoc Avenue. This is to erect a new two-family dwelling, proposed for off-street parking. Violation of Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking loading requirements, off-street parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient.
474. Does change occupancy from store to brewery?
Madam Chair, that was an error, I'm not sure where that came from, the gentleman read the correct violations.
Yep.
Okay.
That was the brewery.
We're not proposing a brewery, there's been too many of those today.
So, I'm sorry, so what's the proposal again?
To direct a new two-family with proposed for off-street parking.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you very much for your time today, I know it's been a long day, we'll try to get here quickly. Kyle Smith with KDS Law, business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston Beck Bay. And to my right, I have both of the owners and proponents.
So tell us why you deferred the last time and what's happened since?
The initial plans called for a reconstruction of a two-car garage over the position of the existing single-car garage. The owners had some feedback from the community that they were concerned of the lack of number of parking spaces. The plans have been changed slightly, the garage has been removed, they have now calling for four spaces, non-garage spaces to the right side of the building. So plans changed slightly, Chair.
Okay, and it's still four units?
No, Miss, two units.
I'm sorry, so two units, what are the sizes of the units?
They are mirrored left and right, Madam Chair, they're roughly about 2,190 square feet each, so an aggregate square footage of just shy of 4,400.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Joe Coffin-Joe from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project, they've held two butters meetings, one in, one back in July, one in September. They've received no opposition from the community, they've worked with the community in redesigning the parking. We would ask for a VPDA design review in regards to the front yard parking. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
It's side, it's kind of side yard because it's a corner lot.
I believe on the, on the refusal letter, that it did say front yard parking.
Okay, cool, thank you. Is anybody, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
BPLD.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Meeting is now adjourned.
About the base...
Same, we're the same.